I don't know if you'll have happy though the way the last item.
Yes.
Whatever the two times that could be tonight.
I'm going to my guest room.
Yeah, I've been listening since then.
I didn't say I said I didn't.
Yeah, I'm saying I told too. My daughter asked me. She asked, well, by the way, well, nicely doing it. But I asked.
Really went out.
That's my girl. Use your head.
I don't know if people have had before the way the last item.
Yes.
Whatever the two times that could be tonight.
Oh, man.
Okay.
Excuse me.
I'm calling this.
What you?
I am the provision for.
Oh, sorry.
How dare you.
It's over.
What's up, buddy? What do you need?
And one side.
I cannot just in the back.
Oh, man.
Man, we are always.
It's like one of the same.
Oh.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God. Except for the other girl. But, yeah.
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 I cannot.
In the back.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Man, we are always.
It's like one of the same.
Always.
Oh, my God.
Oh, my God.
Except for the other girl.
She's playing different games.
But, yeah.
But he's fine.
He's.
Yeah.
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 I just got emailed.
Yeah.
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 I mean, you're.
Yeah.
I've got time to be.
Yeah.
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 You know, we also.
You gotta check.
Rodney.
Looking for the insurance stuff.
So he's trying to find.
Oh, how good.
No.
Melissa ran out of both.
She raised.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
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 Right.
That's right.
No, no, right, no.
Doesn't that sound like.
Jackson.
Well, that's for a little bit.
So you're not running one.
I know that.
Oh.
Gosh, I thought it was on the clock.
City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Autumn Attendam.
Here.
Autumn Grover.
Here.
Autumn Rainey.
Here.
Autumn Burris.
Here.
Autumn Fisk.
Here.
Autumn Braithwaite.
Here.
Autumn Nguyen.
Here.
Autumn Wilson.
Here.
Autumn Holmes.
Here.
Nine to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, October 22 meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is Mayor's Public Announcements and Proclamations. And I have a proclamation for Tags Bakery and Pastry Shop's 75th Anniversary. Whereas for the past 75 years, Tags Bakery and Pastry Shop, a family business, has been providing a high level of quality, fresh baked goods, from assorted cakes, cookies, doughnuts, pastries, and much more. And whereas the name Tags comes from the initials of Thomas Albert Gorham, father of the original owner who opened the bakery in 1937 on Central Street in Evanston. And whereas after a year, the business was sold to the Gebhardt family, who operated it from 1938 to 1968. And whereas in 1968, Don and Jan Vetter bought the business and expanded from its original 1,200-square-foot operation to the present 3,800-square-foot space. And whereas the Vedders have since passed the business on to their children, Greg and Gretchen, who continue to serve the residents of Evanston, the North Shore, and Northwest Chicago communities. And whereas Tags takes pride in every baked good using fresh ingredients and baked with the care that only a family business can give. Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth Tisdale, Mayor of the City of Evanston, do hereby proclaim October 22, 2012, as Tags Bakery and Pastry Shop Day in the City of Evanston in celebration of its 75th Anniversary. Would Gretchen and Greg and Jan and Don please come up? [applause]
Get a couple of pictures. Three, two, one. Couple more. Perfect. Thank you.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may. By my reckoning, 75 years of Tags Bakery on Central Street, 44 years of the Vetter family running Tags Bakery. So, thank you very much. Now, two generations Tags is by every account and every measure and institution in Evanston. And we're so glad you're there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're glad to be here.
And I love the smiley face cookies.
Oh, yes.
Oh.
And.
Another institution, you should note, too, that Tags has now infiltrated beyond just their retail establishment on Central Street, selling the famous Florentines through Jewel Osco stores, through Jewel stores all over the Chicagoland area. The preferred place to purchase them is, of course, on Central Street. But if you're dying for your Florentine fix, you can go to a Jewel and pick up the Tags Florentines there. So, congratulations.
Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you all.
And I have another announcement. Our clerk. Oh, wow. I'm the mayor, okay? Rodney, you can open it while I talk about. I do have another announcement. We have among us the Rookie of the Year 2012, Rodney Green, City Clerk of Evanston, Illinois, from the Municipal Clerks of Illinois. And there it is. And Rodney, would you like to tell us what you did to win that?
Well, it's each year the municipal clerks pick one of the clerks who has been a clerk for less than five years and who has done something in the community that either solved a problem, created a problem.
Which did you do?
I solved. So, they gave me the award for the early voting where I permit the elderly, the handicapped, and the parents who have crying babies to go first before the voting. And so that was one of the areas that they acknowledged me for.
Congratulations. We are very proud.
Thank you.
And I have one short report from the Northwest Municipal Conference. We are still working on the pension issue and have no clear idea of when Springfield is going to actually discuss this. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. First, Suzette Robinson, Director of Public Works, is here to make an announcement.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and City Manager. First, I'm going to turn it over to representatives of Active Transportation Alliance, and then I'll be back to say a few more words.
Good evening, everyone. I am Melody Geraci. I am from the Active Transportation Alliance. I'm the deputy director there. But tonight, I'm representing the League of American Bicycleists because we have an exciting award for the City of Evanston. Again, thank you to Mayor Tisdale and the Director of Public Works, Suzette, and all of the team that made this possible. The League of American Bicycleists was founded in 1880, believe it or not, back when cycling had its heyday in the United States. Today, the League represents the nation's 57 million bicyclists in its mission to promote bicycling for fun, fitness, and transportation, and works through advocacy and education to create a bicycle-friendly America. The Bicycle Friendly Community Program is revolutionizing the way that communities evaluate their quality of life, sustainability, and transportation needs while allowing them to benchmark their progress toward improving bicycle friendliness. Since 2002, the program has accepted nearly 500 applications for designation, and there are currently 242 bicycle-friendly communities in 47 states. And in Illinois, this is a very elite group. It includes the City of Chicago, City of Evanston, Naperville, help, Champaign-Urbana, and Schaumburg. And that's it. Okay? So, you're up there. And three of those places only have a bronze status. And Evanston has silver. Mm-hmm. They shall remain unnamed. The program emphasizes that bicycling is a simple solution to many of the challenges we face in our community. And as Evanston residents well know, bicycling is about mobility, it's about sustainability, health, and so much more. Bicycle-friendly communities are great places to live, work, and visit. At Active Trans, sometimes we say that people on bikes are an indicator species of a livable community. You see people out riding their bicycles, you know you're in a good place. Suzette and her team here will certainly tell you that applying for this honor is no small endeavor. It takes tremendous effort to gather all of the information required and to bring all the right people to the table, and to fill out that application deserves an award in and of itself. The League was particularly impressed with certain aspects of Evanston's efforts to build a world-class bicycle-friendly community. I'd like to point a few of those out. One was the bicycling culture. From people biking to work, to students biking to school, to the recreational bicyclist who enjoys viewing the beautiful views and neighborhoods. All of these things come together to really create a very strong bicycle culture. They also liked the fact that Evanston has a dense development structure and that trips are short. There's a very highly bike-friendly university here, high levels of bicycle use, and a good integrated bike network. Infrastructure, Evanston is leading the charge in putting in good bicycle infrastructure in the Midwest, as a matter of fact, including your new protected bicycle lane. Community engagement, Evanston is obviously known well for its community engagement and responding to the needs of community. This includes the fact that Evanston city staff designed this protected bike lane after hearing from residents who were not comfortable riding on the street with cars so very close to them. So, they responded and did a great thing there. Finally, cooperation, the great support from Mayor Tisdale and Evanston's Alderman, of course, city staff and public works, engineering, planning, and the sustainability departments. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the Evanston Environment Board, the Evanston Bicycle Club, Hala, the 1027 Bicycle Shop, Citizens Greater Greener Evanston Transportation Task Force, Walk and Roll Evanston, School District 65, and all citizen advocates. And without further ado, on behalf of the League of American Bicycleists, I'm pleased to present the City of Evanston with Silver Bicycle Friendly Community Award. Congratulations.
Suzette, get up. Come on up here. Come on. I get to hold the sign in front of my hips. What do you need? You could edit. I'll trade you for one of those pastries. I'm not giving those away. Thank you very much. There you go. All right. Thank you very much. And congratulations, Suzette. Yes.
Well, I just have a few words to follow on what she was saying. When we put together this application, it did, we had a very tight timeline, a very new and green executive secretary who was on point. And this was one of the first applications that she had done and was able to coordinate with several different departments and organizations to make that happen. And I'm sure you'll remember that she was Evanston Employee of the Week for her efforts. So, she mentioned it about Evanston's vision is creating the most livable city in America. And by improving our biking infrastructure, we're helping to make that happen in Public Works in conjunction with parks, recreation, and forestry. And I think it's very important that we don't forget that this is a partnership. We take care of what happens on the street, but without connecting through the park system, our city would be incomplete. So, it really does take an effort between parks and recreation to make this happen. And that's how we got the silver designation. So.
We're here downtown Evanston in one of the brand-new protected bike lanes. Bike lanes are just for bikers, just for their safety, and so people walking on sidewalks have more room.
What we were trying to accomplish with the protected bike lane was to give recreational bikers an opportunity to be able to enjoy biking in Evanston.
And in addition to biking being great because it's a fun thing to do, it's also great for the environment. Bike riding in Evanston really addresses the triple bottom line of sustainability, which says we want to care about how people interact in their own lives, their health, as well as the environment, so no emissions.
The current bike plan was adopted in 2003. There was a multidisciplinary effort involving Planning Department, Parks and Recreation Department, and Public Works. Evanston Bicycle Club has helped us a lot also in planning efforts, and we have great citizen advocacy groups.
The city's been doing a lot of projects to help remove the barriers, to make it easier for people to bike around the community.
Every year, when we have opportunity, we make improvements in the bike lanes and bike routes, plus we also have installed a lot of bike racks throughout the city.
With only seven square miles, most people can get to a lot of their destinations on a bike, but they need to be able to do so in a safe and convenient manner. So, the protected bike lane and all the bike racks really help to make it easier for people to choose their bike rather than hopping in a car to get to their destination.
We know what we have here, and it's nice to receive affirmation from a national organization that says what we're doing here is really good and should be recognized.
So, I wanted to move on. And some of this you already heard in terms of the people we need to thank who helped make this happen. Active Transportation Alliance, Evanston Bicycle Club, Citizens Greener Evanston, the Evanston Environment Board, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. And one of the things that we also got notification of is that we received a grant to update our bike plan from CMAP. So, that was an added kudo with an application that was due a week after this bike application. Same secretary did both of these things first time and was successful in achieving both of those things. So, we have a good staff supporting us to make that happen. And of course, the Illinois Department of Transportation. The departments that made it happen, once again, this was mentioned before, Community Economic Development, the Evanston Police Department, City Manager's Office Sustainability, and Citizen Engagement. And of course, we can't do anything without money, so we always have to thank the Finance Department, although he is a little stingy, but we've managed to get a little bit out of him. And the people. You know, Rajiv Dehal is our senior traffic engineer, and he was the glue. He's the bicycle historian. He had all of that information, pulling that information out of his brain and onto our application. We would have never been able to do it. There was not a book. There was not dialogues and memos. It was all him recalling all of the meetings, the multimodal transportation plan, all of that work that he did and put together of that information. And Stephanie Levine was the project manager for the original bike plan that was done in 2003 and did a fantastic job on that. And we hope will be working with us as we update that with our CMAP grant. And Satin Agar is the one that builds everything that we envision. And he did an outstanding job with the construction of the protected bike lane in the Church Street Project. Michelle Kane is the secretary that I've been talking about so much throughout, that pulled together all this information. Jim Mayworm is the bike rack everywhere, anywhere. He puts them in as there have been requirements for that from the streets and sanitation personnel. And last, but certainly not least, is Catherine Hurley, who has, as the Sustainability Manager for the City of Evanston, has done a phenomenal job, as you saw, in being able to articulate our roles in the video and just a tremendous amount of support and resources. And then, special thanks to the mayor, of course, and the city council, the school district, and Evanston residents and businesses, and the residents in particular, who really support and this is, the level of involvement from voting to what color the bike lane would be. And that was a big issue because the color that was shown was the color that won. Well, that was also the only color that was approved for use in IDOT. And so, we got some feedback that said, well, we weren't really voting. Well, but yes, we were in Evanston. Because what would happen is if we picked another color, we were going to go back to FHWA and say, hey, we really want this color here in Evanston. I don't know how successful we were going to be, but we were certainly going to take that information. And then I wanted to point out that you noticed that all of the bubbles were silver. So, that was. So, congratulations, Evanston.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, none of this happens without city staff that thinks about what are the best practices? Where is the innovation going? Is this something that we can accomplish within our limited budget? Thinking about every street differently and more than just a way of transporting automobiles more efficiently, but who's sharing these roads? So, a lot of credit goes to Mr. Dehal and Ms. Robinson, Mr. Nagar, who see, and Ms. Hurley, who see our streets differently than we have in the past and are looking for incorporating these great innovations and putting us that much farther ahead of the rest of the world for bike friendliness. So, thank you very much to the staff.
Thank you. And one last update. We've been doing a lot recently with some additions to our website and some features for new ways for residents to contact our 3-1-1 service. Luke Stowe, who's our web developer, is here to give a brief update on some of the work that we've been doing. Welcome, Luke.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members, city clerk, city manager. Just want to talk briefly about our new 3-1-1 and web services. It's a tough announcement to follow, so I'll do my best. Click to Call is one of the first features that we added more recently for 3-1-1 services. When users or visitors are visiting our website, it just speeds up the engagement process with 3-1-1. So, if they're browsing the website, they can click the Call Me button, add in their phone number, it rings their phone, and connects them directly to a 3-1-1 operator. And if for some reason our operators are busy, or if it's after hours, it has an option for them to leave a voicemail that is immediately emailed to 3-1-1 staff so we can follow up with them promptly. Live Web Chat is another feature that we've added to our website. It's now available on the homepage and the 3-1-1 dashboard. And especially for folks of a younger generation, many of them prefer to use the web to communicate with customer service, operations, as we know. So, we wanted to offer the Live Web Chat as an alternative to calling 3-1-1. It gives you real-time answers from 3-1-1 representatives. It's a secure channel to communicate with, and also offers a transcript. So, if the 3-1-1 operator is providing website addresses, or email addresses, or phone numbers, and other information, the citizen can choose to have the transcript of the conversation emailed to them for reference. And so, that has proved to be a very popular feature. We launched this feature several weeks ago, kind of quietly, and we've been seeing our traffic pick up with Live Web Chat. Another feature that we've added is SMS texting. We're very proud of this feature. We believe we're one of the very few communities in the entire country that's offering real-time conversational 3-1-1 texting services. New York City offers it, but very few other cities and counties in the country are currently doing this. Again, it's real-time mobile communication with our 3-1-1 center. And we also offer a follow-up survey. It's very easy to engage. You just simply text keyword Evanston to 3-1-1, 3-1-1, obviously very easy to remember. And an operator usually picks up within less than a minute. There's a greeting, they're able to answer the question, and then they're presented with a mobile-friendly survey so we can always constantly improve our services. So, especially for tackling the issue of digital divide, many times, folks may not have high-speed internet at home, so they might not be browsing our website. But we find most communities now have 95% or higher penetration of text-enabled cellphones. And so, we want to add this, we wanted to add this feature to kind of bridge that digital divide. And then we've also, I mentioned the survey, we've got the survey, of course, on our website. for them to leave a voicemail that is immediately emailed to 3-1-1 staff so we can follow up with them promptly. Live Web Chat is another feature that we've added to our website. It's now available on the homepage and the 3-1-1 dashboard. And especially for folks of a younger generation, many of them prefer to use the web to communicate with customer service, operations, as we know, so we wanted to offer the Live Web Chat as an alternative to calling 3-1-1. It gives you real-time answers from 3-1-1 representatives. It's a secure channel to communicate with and also offers a transcript. So if the 3-1-1 operator is providing website addresses, or email addresses, or phone numbers, and other information, the citizen can choose to have the transcript of the conversation emailed to them for reference. And so that has proved to be a very popular feature. We launched this feature several weeks ago, kind of quietly, and we've been seeing our traffic pick up with Live Web Chat. Another feature that we've added is SMS texting. We're very proud of this feature. We believe we're one of the very few communities in the entire country that's offering real-time conversational 3-1-1 texting services. New York City offers it, but very few other cities and counties in the country are currently doing this. Again, it's real-time mobile communication with our 3-1-1 center. And we also offer a follow-up survey. It's just, it's very easy to engage. You just simply text keyword "Evanston" to 3-1-1, 3-1-1, obviously very easy to remember, and an operator usually picks up within less than a minute. There's a greeting, they're able to answer the question, and then they're presented with a mobile-friendly survey so we can always constantly improve our services. So especially for tackling the issue of digital divide, many times folks may not have high-speed internet at home, so they might not be browsing our website, but we find most communities now have 95% or higher penetration of text-enabled cellphones. And so we want to add this, we wanted to add this feature to kind of bridge that digital divide. And then we've also, I mentioned the survey, we've got the survey, of course, on our website in addition to follow-ups to the SMS texting. We have gotten lots of feedback from folks that are very happy with the hold times. We beat industry standards when it comes to hold times for our 3-1-1 services. And also occasionally, we get some suggestions of how we can improve our website content to speed up answers, so the surveys have proved useful for that. Finally, I wanted to mention, very excited that in the last couple of weeks, we've added, we've basically improved the mobile optimization of our website. So if anyone has used it in the last couple of weeks, you may have noticed a slightly different format, and that format is geared to a more responsive design. So if you're on an Android device, BlackBerry iPhone, Windows mobile device, the page will render properly for your cellphone. There's less scrolling. We offered click-to-call. It leverages the GPS capability on the phone, and it will prompt you to save an icon to your home screen for quick access to the website. It also auto-syncs with our regular website, so we're not maintaining two different separate websites. Once we make a change on the main website, it automatically changes on the mobile-friendly site as well. So we're really excited about this. It also gives you an opportunity to go back to the old, full website if you prefer that in your mobile browser. So these are some of the initiatives that we've launched recently. I want to mention Sue Ponorelli has been excellent to work with for 3-1-1 services. We have made a great team together, I believe, and we continue to strive to be a leader in both 3-1-1 and web services, and we invite the council and the public to continue to provide their feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, before we conclude, I just want to thank Luke for all his good work, but Matt Swankowski, as many of you know, has been doubled up, not only serving as our Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator, but also as the Interim Citizen Engagement Coordinator with the absence of Erica Starlee, who has had her twins. So Erica's coming back this week from her three months of maternity leave, and so Matt gets to go back to regular programming. So Matt, thank you for all your good work the last several months.
Is he still also going to be a photographer?
No. He'll get to go home at night. Madam Mayor, that concludes reports.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. I just want to say that today was the first day of early voting. We had a total of 495 early voters today, and we're looking for even more. Also, I want to let the voters know that there is no straight ticket. So if you've been getting emails about voting a straight ticket, there is no such thing. That stopped 10, 10 years plus ago where it stopped. So you need to vote on every account or every point on the ballot. If you do not, then you disclaim the people that you need to put in. So there's no straight ticket. Vote every spot. I also have another announcement, Mayor. I have spoken to the legal minds of Ansel Glink, and the statements I will make has been approved by those attorneys. I written them in concern of some statements that were made a couple of weeks ago, and it says, "Hi Rodney, you are right again. Clerks are not required to produce verbatim minutes." Section 2.06 of the Open Meetings Acts, Act 5, ILCS 120/2.06 specifies as follows: "All public bodies shall have keep written minutes of all their meetings, whether open or closed, and a verbatim record of all their closed meetings in the form of an audio or video recording. Minutes shall include but not be limited to the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members of the public body recorded as either present or absent, and whether the members were physically present or present by means of audio or video conference, and a summary of discussion of all matters proposed, deliberated, or decided, and a record of any votes taken. But there are no verbatim minutes for any open meeting acts." Leave it there, Mayor. And also in the Robert's Rules of Order, if you look at Chapter 10, the Officers and the Minutes, 60 dash, it talks about the minutes, and it says the same. The essentials of the record are as follows: the keeping of the minutes, the regular or stated, special or adjourned special, the date, the time, the place, who was there, what was discussed, the absence or presence of those members of the public body, and the conclusion of all discussions. Again, no verbatim records are needed to be done by any clerk or any municipality or township. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. The next item on the agenda is citizen comment. Citizen comment is an important part of council meetings. We welcome comments from all citizens, and we encourage the expression of different opinions and viewpoints. Comments from concerned citizens are another reason that makes Evanston a remarkable place to live. The City's Board of Ethics concluded its independent investigation and determined there was not a conflict of interest regarding the Kendall matter. Pursuant to Council Rule 6.4, that matter is concluded and is beyond the jurisdiction of the council. All further redundant comments made on this subject made by any speaker will be ruled out of order. No further redundant and duplicative comments, such comment which has gone on for over 18 months, will be heard on the Kendall matter at this or any other council meeting. This ruling is in accordance with the Council rules, the holding of the U.S. Supreme Court, and Perry Education Association versus Perry Local Educators Association, and Section 206-G of the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Citizen comment is limited to three minutes for each speaker. I'm going to read the first four names, and if you would please follow the speaker before you: Daniel Garrison, Paul Janicki, Gene Lindwall, and Jack Weiss.
Thank you. I am Daniel Garrison. I live at 1228 Simpson Street. I'm speaking in support of the Preservation Commission's rejection of a certificate of appropriateness for Northwestern's proposed visitor center. I am president of the Preservation League of Evanston and was for 43 years a member of the Northwestern faculty, during which I've seen many historically significant and sensitive renovations and reconstructions of historic buildings on Northwestern's campus, notably University Hall, Harris Hall, and Annie Mae Swift Hall. Northwestern now proposes a new steel and glass visitor center in the immediate vicinity of Fisk Hall, which is Northwestern's only building designed by Daniel Burnham and was built in 19, yeah, sorry, 1899. Fisk Hall, one of Northwestern's oldest buildings, establishes a significant architectural context for the South Beach entrance to the university. Our compatibility standard requires that the proposed visitor center be situated on a site where it will not clash with Fisk Hall, or that it be redesigned in a compatible style. Because the proposed visitor center is at a major campus gateway with significant exposure to view from off-campus, the issue of compatibility is not entirely Northwestern's private business. This area has been at risk before. For example, I believe it was in the 1980s when Northwestern proposed to build a wall of dormitories along Sheridan Road and had to shelve the plan because the city would not, for very good reason, issue a building permit. We now ask you again to defend the integrity of this area adjacent to South Beach and Northwestern's southern portal by upholding the Preservation Commission's rejection of a certificate of appropriateness for Northwestern's visitor center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, my name is Paul Janicki. I'm here tonight as a resident and a board member of the Preservation League of Evanston and an architect with a practice here in Evanston. I believe this proposal does not meet the preservation standards as outlined in the preservation ordinance. I'd like to outline those further quickly. Section 2-8-9-B, Article 3, speaks to the proportion of openings and states, "The relationship of the width to height of windows and doors shall be visually compatible with properties, structures, sites, public ways, objects, and places to which the building is visually related." The only property that qualifies as being visually related to speak of happens to be the Daniel Burnham-designed Fisk Hall directly west of the new project. Fisk Hall, one of Northwestern's surviving masterpieces, has what one would describe as traditional window fenestration. The window-to-mass relationship of its many openings is very apparent and defined. The proposed project appears to have only one opening, and it looks to be several stories high by over 100 feet long. I'm not sure how this provision of the ordinance is not being directly violated. Section 2-8-9-B, Article 4, calls for a compatible rhythm of solids to voids. It says that it shall be visually compatible with adjacent properties. Again, Burnham's Fisk Hall has many solids and voids and a very defined rhythm. The visitor center garage has no solids and voids unless the limestone is the solid and the curtain wall is the one and only void. I think this subverts the intent of the ordinance. Section 2-8-9-B, Article 7, states, "The relationship of the materials and texture of the facade shall be visually compatible with the predominant materials used in the structures to which is visually related." The Burnham structure is the only structure that is visually related or even near this new proposed structure. The Burnham building is made of dark brick with a red tile roof. The limestone material shown in the renderings has no compatibility with its neighbor in materials or texture. The texture of the Burnham building is small masonry units with many joints. The proposal, the proposed visitor center garage has a handful of joints, and they are simply control joints. I don't think I have to explain why the glass curtain wall fails to be visually compatible with the Burnham building. Section 2-8-9-B, Article 8, asks that roof shapes be visually compatible with structures that are visually related. A flat roof, excuse me, a flat roof with stair towers protruding above the facade is incompatible with the pitched roof on Fisk Hall. Section 2-8-9-B, Article 11, states, "A structure shall be visually compatible with the property of structures, sites, public ways, objects, and places to which it is visually related in its directional character," whether this be vertical character, horizontal character, or non-directional character. It is my humble opinion that the directional punched-opening fenestration of Fisk Hall, which is the only structure that is visually related, is not reflected in the garage proposal.
I'm sorry, I need you to wrap up.
Yeah, sure. The United States Secretary of the Interior standards state, "The historic character of property shall be retained and preserved. Removal removal of historic materials or alterations of features in spaces that characterize a property shall be avoided." I believe the small standard trees, actually large standard trees that sit along the eastern edge and will be raised to make room for this garage qualifies as a feature or a space that characterizes the property. Lastly, I would also like to make mention that the Preservation Commission is made up of very bright and professional individuals who donate their time to help steer the course of preservation in our city and have always been extremely thoughtful in their decisions. For council to approve this project as proposed when their commission has voted 7 to 0, 7 to 0, to deny it would be a loud statement that citizens who are architectural and planning specialists carry no weight with this council. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. My name is Gene Lindwall. I live at 625 Library Place. I'm speaking on items SP1 and A19, which involve the proposed NU visitor center and parking garage at 1841 Sheridan Road. I'm a Northwestern alum, actually a classmate of Gene Sunshine's, and have lived adjacent to the Northwestern campus for more than 35 years. I urge you not to overturn the Preservation Commission's decision to deny a certificate of appropriateness for the project. I believe that the building is located too close to Sheridan Campus Drive intersection and creates a highly prominent visual feature that intrudes into the rhythm of the Lake Shore Historic District. More importantly, I do not believe that the City Council should effectively be giving away city lakefront property for a dollar or even a million dollars to accommodate NU's building plans. Northwestern should be required to accommodate the building and the required fire access on their own property. This may mean that the parking garage has to be slightly smaller, another parking level added to the visitor center garage, or another level added to the adjacent 700-plus car parking deck. Evanston does not meet recognized standards for the provision of park and open space as it is. This proposal flies in the face of good stewardship of public lands and lakefront access. In reviewing the facade treatment for the visitor center, I envision a bright purple NU on the south facade and "Go Cats" spelled out in purple lights lighting up the night sky on the west facade. I think that the glass facade really invites the use of the building as a giant billboard for the university. I'm also concerned about the potential for light pollution from the building. As an aside, my bedroom faces the downtown and several Northwestern buildings that are illuminated all night with brightly lit porches. I never used to think very much about night sky issues, but have become increasingly impacted by the, with each new glass building built in the downtown and the glare from the lights. My concern is that a facade with as much glass as is being proposed for the visitor center will be a visual distraction for drivers, not to mention the potentially adverse impact on those living near the center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jack Weiss. I'm a 45-year resident of Evanston, one of those bright Preservation Commission members, and president of Design Evanston. As a member of the Preservation Commission, I ask that you carefully review the record of our deliberations with Northwestern in August, September, and October regarding their proposed visitor center. While they might argue that their proposal meets all of the standards that we, that we review, the commission has argued three times that they clearly do not meet the standards. That's why we unanimously tabled their application once, approved withdrawal a second, a second time, and denied it clearly a third time. Context is everything in this project. The proposed visitor center imposes significant visual impact on anyone passing the southeast entry to the campus. When viewed from the public way, that is Sheridan Road, Clark Street, Beach, or the lake, the building is in its proposed location, the building in its proposed location would present a massive visual statement. If the building were moved north to a position at the western end of the existing parking structure, it would still address Northwestern's need to have parking close to the campus edge. But more importantly, it would shift the visual mass away from the property line and closer to the other arts circle buildings where its scale and design are fully compatible, as they themselves have shown. It would also move the building off the landmark lot of record, away from the historic Fisk Hall, and make their appeal completely unnecessary. If you accept their application for appeal tonight, then I urge you to support our decision to deny a certificate of appropriateness for the proposed visitor center. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is, I apologize, Linda Dowacek, and then Gary Schumacher, Chris Hartzell, and Barbara James.
Hi. My name is Linda Damashek, and I live at 1318 Judson. I'm a proud Northwestern alum who lives near the lakefront, who's concerned about the current proposal for the visitor center and parking lot. I'm especially concerned about the lack of notification and detailed information to residents in the area, many of whom worked very diligently with city staff to create the lakefront master plan. Many aspects of the project's design are in direct contradiction, not only with goals of the lakefront master plan, but also with guidelines set forth by the Preservation Commission. These entities have been created to provide stewardship of the lakefront and the historic architecture of Evanston. Volunteers take their time to sit on the Preservation Commission and help to create the lakefront master plan, and I believe it's important to have integrity and honor the decisions that have been made based on the guidelines of those entities. While I think the idea of the visitor center and additional parking is a good idea, I think the selected location and current design for this location is not a good idea. Easy fix: just move the proposed building to the location northward where the current two-level parking garage is. Then the oversized modern building will not detract from the historic Fisk Hall, and the ecological environment can be maintained. I urge you to uphold the Preservation Commission's denial of the certificate of appropriateness and encourage Northwestern's architects to redesign the location of this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. My name is Gary Schumacher. I'm a resident of
I'm a resident of Evanston, and I'm currently the sitting chair of the Preservation Commission. I just wanted to make a quick couple of points. I want to thank Jack and some of the other commission members who will speak to you tonight. I will skip reiterating what they've already said, but I want to remind you that the consistency shown in the meeting minutes and in the deliberations of the commission have been steadfast and solid on this. We have had the same comments, the same requests, and the same concerns at all three meetings that we've seen Northwestern's proposal. We've offered to work with them, we've offered to discuss alternatives. They have, we've been met with quite a bit of resistance, which I regret. It's unlike our commission to not be able to negotiate and help property owners proceed and meet the criteria of the Preservation Commission. I would urge you to review carefully the notes in the minutes relative to our conversations about the standards for compliance. In particular, the height of this building is significantly higher than the adjacent buildings into which it, it falls along Sheridan Road. The argument has been made that it does meet the height, the height of some of the adjacent buildings on the lot of record, which extends far northward. These buildings are not in visual relationship to this building, and that is one of our standards. That is one of the things that we are deeply concerned about. The fact that this building soars over the ridge as well as the eve line of the adjacent Fisk Hall is a simple statement of its non-compliance. We also, I think if you review our meeting notes and minutes, you'll see that the commission has not taken issue with the design, the integrity, or the style of this building. Their argument to make a limestone building and to make a modern building is certainly within our, within our standards and encouraged. However, the location of this building and the scale is not in compliance with what we've been asked to maintain in terms of landmark lots of record onto which this building falls, nor does it meet the standards of compliance for a Lake Shore Historic District property onto which it will fall if this evening's application for item A19 is granted, which is a lease of a piece of property that is clearly within the Lake Shore Historic District, which does cause this property to fall under our purview both as a Lake Shore Historic District property as well as a landmark lot of record. We've worked in the past very closely with Northwestern, and I would like to think that we've had a good relationship with them. We've recognized and celebrated a great number of their projects, and we look forward to many, many more of them. This project is not one this council has, has supported, and we would like, this commission, I'm sorry, has supported, and we would like very much to see you uphold our decision on this. An additional notification on this, that we would also recommend that this, that the proposed lease for this fire lane be reconsidered. We think that the site of this property is very important in terms of the number of trees and the site context, as it separates the scale of a university campus from our most pristine Historic District, is a very important point to be made. Clearcutting those trees along the lakefront is not in the best interest of Evanston or this community. So I'd like to ask you very carefully to consider the package of information that's been put before you. It's an enormous amount of information, including images and diagrams that explain the height and the context, as well as the notes that we provided in our meeting minutes. So please consider this carefully. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Chris Hartzell, 1108 Grant Street. I come to you tonight as vice chair of the Evanston Preservation Commission, a board member of the Evanston Preservation League, a lifelong Evanston resident, a former Evanston Realtor, and a professional Evanston historian with regard to Evanston's parking garage. The issue is not whether they have a legal right to build a parking garage on their property, it is not whether they have a legitimate need for additional parking, it is not the modern design of the parking garage, the issue is the location of the parking garage, which will visually encroach on the lakefront aesthetic at Clark Street Beach as it protrudes south of the visual line established by Fisk Hall, and it presents a monolithic intrusion on the lakefront and a partial destruction of the lakefront. We on the Preservation Commission suggested they simply construct the garage further north on their property where it will not disrupt and destroy the last natural beachfront in the city. Even though it might require temporary loss of parking as the present low-level garage is demolished, this temporary loss does not negate the feasibility of this plan. I had intended to point out that the construction of the garage will result in a disruption of the natural environment of city property at the site, long established and a significant environmental and aesthetic value. However, I have learned of the long-term lease they've requested for the service drive, which would be on that property, and would constitute an even greater destruction of the site. This particular proposal for this particular structure in this particular location is not the only solution to the parking needs of the university at this end of campus. This particular proposal is a short-sighted solution with long-term ramifications and should be reconsidered and revised. The impact is not only on the adjacent homeowners but on every citizen of and visitor to the city of Evanston. I urge you to uphold our ruling on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name, excuse me, my name is Barbara James. I live at 802 Colfax Street, and I take the dogs, one of whom is the culprit for this, to the dog beach every day and walk by this intersection going to and from the beach. My comments are directed at the Special Order of Business relating to the Preservation Commission's denial of a certificate of appropriateness for Northwestern to build a visitor's center and parking garage at the southeast corner of the university. I also want to comment on the potential lease of city land for access, for an access drive to the visitor, by the visitor's center. I am not opposed to the university building a visitor's center near this proposed location. What I would like the city council to do is tell the university to make certain changes in the current plan that would make the building less intrusive on the lakefront and the Lake Shore Historic District. This is actually what the Preservation Commission said in its denial of the certificate of appropriateness, and I think you've heard that tonight. I would like to also remind the council that city ordinance requires the council to make this decision solely on the basis of the standards set out in the Preservation Ordinance. This means that the council must go through the standards one by one and determine if the current plan meets these individual standards. I believe if you do that objectively, you must support the determination of the Preservation Commission that voted unanimously, with two abstentions, to deny the certificate of appropriateness. Why is this current plan inappropriate for the proposed location? I would ask you to refer to some of the drawings and, and photos in your packets. In Exhibits on Page 14, 46, 55, 60, and 66, it is clear that the proposed building intrudes well into the Clark Street Beach area. After many years and meetings, it is the consensus of the community that the lakefront should remain undeveloped or minimally developed. Having this building loom over one of the most popular beaches in the city goes against this long-developed philosophy. Also, the Preservation Commission clearly determined that the proposed building is not appropriate in this location. Another troubling, and I'm skipping a little bit of it, another troubling matter is what Northwestern's intention for the lake are. From the photograph on Page 55, it appears that the university plans to do away with the water inside the breakwater by the current boathouse and dredge the sand infill or dunes by the bridge. If this is in fact the case, it is absolutely necessary for the university to get approval from the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, and other organizations. The council should not grant the certificate of appropriateness until these approvals or disapprovals are complete. My final concern is about the city leasing city land to facilitate building the building. I find this unbelievable. We cannot afford to lose any lakefront, lakefront land. How could this have gotten so far? Thus, I urge the council to take the following actions. Tell the university to move the building north to at least in line, or better yet, north of the front of Fisk Hall. Take no action until the university obtains appropriate approval from the appropriate federal agencies to tinker with the lake. Do not lease land to Northwestern. What benefits does the city get from such a lease? This could easily be solved by building, moving the building north. I urge you to think carefully about this importance decision and think about what is best for Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you. Suzanne Ferand and Padma Rao, BK Rao, and Peggy Tar. All right.
I am not Suzanne.
I thought you were.
Suzanne couldn't be here tonight.
Would you give her address, please?
Has her address?
Asbury and Lake.
Okay.
I am not Suzanne Ferand. I am Jack Weiss. I'm reading this on her behalf. Is that proper?
Go right ahead.
Thank you. "I write as a resident and owner of an Evanston landmark and as a member of the Preservation Commission. I urge you to reject the application for appeal of the Preservation Commission denial regarding the construction of a parking garage visitor's center at Northwestern. One, as a resident, I was on the dog beach this morning and was struck by how the north view is two windowless limestone boxes on the Northwestern campus with little attempt to ease the transition from beach, from the beach view to its highly-built urban context. Now, the low-level parking structure with intervening green space provides some transition from the beach to the brutal backs of Lewis Hall, the Marshall Dance Center, and Pixstager Hall. By contrast, the new Clark Street Beach building is a welcome visual transition from the lakefront to the built environment, and that building, as you know, is to the south. Transition between zones matters but is a challenge. Evanston is a beautiful place. Its beauty is what makes it distinct from some neighboring communities. As a community, we have an obligation to protect a vital visual asset, its beauty. My own children have come to understand how lucky they were to grow up in a really beautiful place. Two, as a landmark owner within the Evanston Ridge Preservation District, I am subject to the Preservation Ordinance. If I were to bring similar project to the commission, I would be requested and required to reconsider my design so it was more sympathetic with its neighbor, with its neighborhood. I ask nothing more from Northwestern. Three, as a Preservation Commission member, the commission has heard and rejected Northwestern's proposal. Northwestern has brought the same proposal to the table at each submission. Even in its master plan of 2009, the university plans for parking at the south end of the campus but argues for, for a facility, facility that could include up to seven levels above grade and two levels below grade, for a total of 1,100 parking spaces. This configuration would reduce the footprint of a new parking facility and permit new buildings to be wrapped around the parking structure. This would allow for buildings with stunning lakefront views, with buildings with stunning lakefront views. Presumably, these buildings would also allow for stunning views from the lakefront. The proposed garage visitor's, visitor's center does not follow the university's master plan. It is also incompatible with the city's Preservation Ordinance. Specifically, one, its height is not visually compatible with the open space, particularly the beach to which it is visibly related. Two, its scale, its size and mass is not visually compatible with the public way, that is Sheridan Road, and places like Clark Street Beach to which it is visually related. There may be a better solution to Northwestern's real parking challenge than a building, than building a large parking garage, however handsome, on the beach." She underlines this last sentence. "require Northwestern to consider alternatives and to propose them to the Preservation Commission." Thank you.
Thank you.
My comments were approved by my attorney. The city's YouTube video cut out all sound from my comments at the October 1st council meeting, so I'll repeat a few points. When a victim of racial profiling came to this council on September 10th asking for a sincere apology, this council rushed to effectively dump the issue on Chief Eddington. My prior discussions with the chief lead me to believe that he respects everyone no matter what their skin color, and that the incident does not reflect his example. I believe that incidents of racial profiling and racism follow this council's and mayor's repeated and well-documented abuse of minorities. Apparently, due to this council's failure to apologize, the victim of the racial profiling incident filed suit in federal court and named the city as a defendant. At your October 8th meeting, a taxpayer described what sounds like yet another case of racial profiling. I submit that the apartheid double standard of treating minorities as second-class citizens does not reflect Chief Eddington's model but is an accurate reflection of this council's attitudes. I believe that the community should not lose even one child, and that terrible tragedies could have been avoided if this council devoted as many resources to protecting every child regardless of skin color as it wastes on gouging taxpayers to fund the personal vendettas of public officials. I think that our youth should never be sacrificed to fund this council's apparent dislike of minorities resulting in civil rights violations. I submit that every child deserves security and support to achieve their full potential. This mayor claims that the Perry case supports her repeated unconstitutional attacks against and censorship of minorities. But even a casual reader would conclude that Perry deals only with a proprietary internal school mail system and not with the public comment at a city council meeting. I urge the public to read the U.S. Supreme Court's more recent and applicable opinions in Brown v. Entertainment Merchants Association and Snyder v. Phelps, as well, well as Federal Judge Shader's decision in Vergara v. City of Waukegan. These cases are on point, and I submit that Vergara is on all fours. These cases uniformly condemn the speaker-based and viewpoint-based discrimination against minorities that this mayor engages in at nearly every council meeting. At the October 8th meeting, this mayor made up a new so-called rule forbidding me from giving my allotted one minute of speaking time to my mom, even though no such rule was ever applied against anyone else. This mayor insists that we as a minority are not allowed to talk about Kendall, but the video for the August 13th council meeting shows that she allowed a white woman to state her opinions about Kendall. We oppose his council's vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason-
Out of order.
-and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. Stop violating our constitutional rights. Obey the city code and protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Protect the Kendall trees. You are out of order for interrupting.
Yes, I agree. Is the mic on?
Yes. Yes, it is.
Is the mic on?
Yes.
My comments were approved by my attorney. Oh, my name, BK Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were approved by my attorney. At your October 8th meeting, a taxpayer said she was treated very badly by a police officer. My sympathy is to the taxpayer because no one should be treated the way she described. I believe that Chief Eddington will look into the issue carefully. Some of you have expressed the view that making police officers live in Evanston might improve their attitude towards citizens. I submit that a good officer stays good wherever the officer lives, and a less-than-good officer is not going to change his behavior just because he lives here. For example, I remind you that you all live in Evanston, but your attitude towards taxpayers, especially this gray-haired one, is not a good one. So, don't come up with hasty solutions for difficult issues. Another issue with you is your eagerness to overextend your authority over citizens. Your rental licensing proposal is so flawed that people came out in droves to denounce it at your October 8th meeting. One taxpayer said that his 96-year-old mother-in-law would not be able to live comfortably if such a burdensome ordinance is passed. Another taxpayer asked, "Are you insane?" I know the answer to that question. I submit that only the insane would approve killing of 24 tall trees in one block. Only the insane would try to silence taxpayers, and only the insane would show disrespect to citizens but demand respect from them. I would consider asking, "Have you no shame?" But I know the answer to that question, too. Respect your oath of office by respecting the taxpayers. Protect the trees at Kendall. Nothing else will work for you. And I shall return. By the way, one of the disgruntled taxpayer wrote this. I didn't. It shows the frustration that people are feeling about you. Yes, I shall return.
Thank you.
My name is Margaret Tar. I live at 907 Sherman Avenue, and again, I'm here about the noise from Revolution's spin. Um- And again, I'm here about the noise from Revolution Spin. But I received a letter from a former occupant of an apartment above Revolution Spin. She was there from September 2010 through August 2012. She said she complained to the police, the management company, the owner of Revolution Spin, and Alderman Wilson about the noise after Revolution Spin moved in in 2011. I have some concerns that officers responding to these complaints, even if they do respond, did not write tickets to Revolution Spin, even when the noise was before 7:00 a.m. Well, on October 16th, a Revolution Spin representative and I appeared before a City of Evanston adjudicator for a hearing on a complaint I made against Revolution Spin for making noise before 7:00 a.m. Revolution Spin was fined. Prior to this, Revolution Spin staff had told the city council that they did not, pardon me, that they operated within the ordinance, that is, that they did not operate before, say, 7:00 a.m. This wasn't true. On October 18th, as a friend and I walked past Revolution Spin, she stopped to peek in its window, and we found a posting, or actually multiple postings in one window, the content of which I'll read to you below. Alderman Wilson just happened to pass by at the same time and also read the postings. The posting said, and I quote, "To all our clients, we sincerely apologize for any inconvenience that Ms. Moser from Moser Sewing Studio or her counterpart, Margaret 'Peggy' Tar, have caused you. Our pledge is to always have a safe environment for you and for our instructors, and we promise to uphold this. Ms. Moser will be vacating her space shortly, and as promised, Revolution Spin will expand, continue to soundproof both the ceilings and the walls, and continue to provide you the best workouts in the greatest community." I want to stop for a minute and say, there's been no soundproofing, even though they came before the council and commented about soundproofing. There has been none. Back to the posting. "We are also taking serious measures to deal with any person who threatens our means of livelihood and may have made you feel unsafe. The Evanston Police Department and Revolution Spin's legal team have been notified of all issues and are handling them appropriately. We look forward to continuing to be a positive and big part of your life here on Sherman Avenue for a long time to come. Thank you so much for your support, and thank you to the City of Evanston and the Evanston Police Department for your support. The Revolution Spin family." Now, obviously, the thank yous to the City of Evanston and the Police Department makes us wonder, is this why the police had not ticketed Revolution Spin when it should have? I mean, this thank you just, you know, what can I say? Anyway, the noise continues. It hasn't stopped. The only good thing that has happened since they were fined on October 16th, the 6:00 a.m. classes no longer are held. So, I thank the Police Department for that, and I thank particularly one officer who evidently had the courage to ticket them. I also want to say, just in ending, that I hope that the Daily Northwestern will see fit to cover complaints about Revolution Spin noise as a neighborhood problem. It is not just a sensationalized dispute between two businesses. And I do hope that the Daily Northwestern will not write its stories in the style of The Star or The National Enquirer. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Next, we have special orders of business.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have two this evening. First is the Northwestern University application for appeal of the Preservation Commission's decision denying a certificate appropriateness for 1841 Sheridan Road, which is a visitor's center and a 435-car parking garage. Mr. Griffin, the Community and Economic Development Director, is here and will provide some initial comments. And then Carlos Ruiz, our preservation planner, will be here to give an overview. Also, Ken Cox is here from the Law Department. And perhaps after Mr. Griffin's initial comments, we could have Mr. Cox just give an overview of what is before the council and the parameters for the council's decision-making.
Alderman Fisk has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That was my question about, it's, on number five, under paragraph G, Planning and Development Committee shall review the appeals solely on the basis of the record and application of the appropriate standards. So, I'd like Mr. Cox to address that. When appropriate, I mean, when your turn comes is fine.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Green, Wally Bupkowitz, City Manager, my name is Steve Griffin, Director of Community and Economic Development. We have a very short presentation tonight. The laws set up is very strict. It's for the council to review the records as produced by the Historic Preservation Commission. And we have Carlos Ruiz here that'll present an overview and the standards that were reviewed. And then finally, Mr. Cox will walk the council through the provisions. Carlos.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, City Manager, and Mr. Green, City Clerk. I'm here to transmit the appeal from Northwestern University regarding the denial of a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of a visitor's center and 435 cars. What I have with me are a series of slides that will show you some of the aspects of the process and the appeal process. And I would like to give this to Northwestern University. The first slide shows you a couple things, primarily the location of the proposed garage, which is in gray. That's 1841 Sheridan. It also shows immediately to the west FIS Hall, which is the landmark building. And if you look at the remaining of that section, it shows you the boundaries of the ladder record, the landmark ladder record. And south of that, immediately south, you can see the red line straight goes from east to west to the lake. That's the portion that is the Lake Shore Historic District. The second slide shows you the south plan that was submitted to the Preservation Commission by Northwestern University with the location of the property, of the building on the property, the location of FIS Hall to the west, and also the proposed fire lane path that would be on the historic district. The next slide shows you the south and west elevation of the proposed visitor's center and garage that have the curtain wall. The building was described as being a six-level parking garage with a visitor's center on the first floor or the grade that has a two-story ceiling height. The curtain wall is made of glass, and the exterior walls are primarily limestone. And there will be another slide that will show the height of the proposed building. At the first meeting in August, the height was described as being 84 feet 9 inches to the top of the curtain wall and 94 feet 7 inches to the top of the cornice. Later, at the October 16 meeting, those heights were revised by the applicant as 70 feet 6 inches to the roof and 81 feet 8 inches to the fascia of the building. The height of FIS Hall at the first meeting was described as plus-minus 86 feet. At the October 16 meeting, it was described as being 73 feet 1 inch high to the highest point and 63 feet to the lower roof of FIS Hall. And finally, this is a slide shows the after photograph that shows on the left FIS Hall and on the right the proposed garage. So that the commission make a decision or their findings based on a couple of the items that are listed in our Preservation Ordinance as the standards. The primary concern of the commission was the height and also the location of the building. Northwestern University, at their October 16 meeting, went over all the standards for review. They found that all the standards were met except for number 13 that was not applicable in application and number 17 was signed that were not presented to the commission. On the other hand, the commission had found that all the standards apply except the standard 15 and 17, and in the three meetings they had in August 21st, September 18, and October 16, had consistently been concerned with the location, the height, and the impact on the historic district and the public beach. Finally, at the October 16 meeting, after the presentation from Northwestern University, where they have spoken about the context, meaning the entire ladder record that spans from Lincoln Street on the north all the way to Sheridan Road on the south, where there are 12 designated landmarks, Northwestern contended that the commission should look at the entire ladder record, whereas the commission had stated in the past that the most immediate building that had visual related to the project is FIS Hall. At the end, the commission made a motion to deny the certificate of appropriateness. The vote was seven ayes to obsessions. And at the end of the meeting on October 16, Northwestern University submitted their application for appeal, which you have in front of you. In your packet, and I submitted one to, excuse me, representative of Northwestern, you have these five slides, but five more slides that aren't part of the record that were not transmitted in the electronic version for technical reasons, but they are part of the record. That include the south and east elevation of the building, a aerial view of the location of the building, and there were large drawings that were posted on the wall during the meeting that show the context from Northwestern's perspective of the entire campus from Sheridan Road and also from looking north and looking east. And also, they submitted the revised elevations with the heights that I attributed before. So, that concludes my presentation to the city council, and if you have any questions, I'd be available.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes.
Mr. Ruiz, could you just repeat the heights that you said you have now? I just couldn't get them. I'm sorry.
The heights that were submitted on the October 16 meeting are 70 feet 6 inches to the roof and 81 feet 8 inches to the fascia of the building, which is the highest point.
Excuse me. Carlos, could you repeat the height of the highest point on FIS Hall? Was it 63 feet?
No, it would be, initially was plus-minus 86 at the August 21st meeting.
It's 73 feet.
At the October 16, the highest point was 73 feet 1 inch, and there's another roof slope that has a height of 63 feet.
Mr. Cox? I think that you've answered all the questions. Thank you, Mr. Ruiz.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Green, City Manager Bupkowitz, Ken Cox from the City's Law Department. After Carlos's summary of the underlying proceedings, just wanted to go over the appropriate and applicable standards. City Code Section 288G covers appeals from decisions by the Preservation Commission regarding certificates of appropriateness. There are seven subsections there, too, the key ones being number seven, which the previous six all refer to such appeals going to Planning and Development Committee of Council. Number seven states, though, that "The authority to review, grant, and/or deny appeals of certificates of appropriateness shall vest in the PND Committee so long as membership of said committee consists of all seated Alderman." A number of years ago, the council committees, their makeups were amended to only include a number of Alderman rather than all nine. Therefore, it says, "Otherwise, said authority rests with council or its duly authorized committee," which is how this appeal is ended up before you tonight on the agenda. As for the standards, which Alderman Fisk specifically asked about, 288G5 states that "The committee," or in this case, the council, "shall review the appeal solely on the basis of the record and application of the appropriate standards included in Section 289 of this chapter." The specific standards there, Carlos mentioned them before, are in 289B, which are standards for review of construction, given that Northwestern is proposing to build a new structure rather than alter an existing one. And those standards are laid out in the memorandum to the council dated October 18th from Steve Griffin, Dennis Moreno, and Carlos Ruiz.
Thank you. I don't think anyone has any questions at this point.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, it may be appropriate at this point to ask the appellant if they wish to say anything.
Mr. Naylor, would you like to say something?
These are copies of what was submitted to the Preservation Commission. Banner Mayor, Alderman, City Manager, City Clerk, Ron Naylor, Northwestern University, 2020 Ridge Avenue. And thank you for the opportunity tonight. If we could have the presentation loaded, I'd appreciate that. These are materials that-
Mr. Naylor, you have about 10 minutes, I hope.
Absolutely. First item is an overview of the southeast campus showing the music building, the area where the parking deck currently exists that will be demolished to make way for the screen space, the sailing center, and the proposed visitor's center. And this does show what was the current shoreline. And when the artist tried to take three different architects' proposals and stitch them together, they took artistic license and put sand in here, and in fact, that was an artist mistake. It's never been proposed. The documents that have been submitted to the city as part of the contract documents show that there is no filling in of the lake in any way. Carlos has shown you the views looking northeast and northwest. And what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the, some of the facts, because we've heard a number of comments made tonight, and I've heard comments from folks over the past couple of weeks where they've said that, you know, we exceed the height limit, we don't meet the setbacks, when in fact, this is a by-right development that doesn't require any zoning variances, it doesn't require a special use, it meets all of the zoning standards that have been set in that district. And in fact, it's gone through an extensive zoning review by the city staff and approved by the city staff as meeting all of the zoning requirements. In terms of the site development, as I just noted, there will be no filling of any water areas, and in fact, no filling in the floodplain. We had heard that, you know, folks were concerned that they were refilling in the floodplain. That is not the case. We have received approvals from the Illinois Department of Natural Resources and the Illinois Historic Preservation Agency, and we've also received approval from SPAR, conditioned on approval by the Preservation Commission. And IEP A will review the project but solely for a construction permit to deal with stormwater discharge during construction. There is no other- There is no other IEPA permit required for the development of this project. And as we've gone through the project, we've listened to a number of folks. We've met with Judy Pollock from the Audubon Society and a number of other folks from Audubon. We met with Libby to talk about, you know, the birds and how do we deal with that. And so, we've actually used on the garage what is developed by Viricon, one of the manufacturers in Wisconsin, bird-friendly glass. They've undertaken research, and the research shows that the type of glass that we'll be using on the parking garage is a highly bird-friendly glass that absolutely minimizes any bird collisions with that glass. And we've submitted documents like that to the Audubon Society. And we've also taken care to make sure that the landscape is a bird-friendly landscape and also a landscape that relates to the beach area and the dunes that are there. And in terms of lights, we heard about lights tonight. All of the lights in the garage, other than the required emergency egress lighting, will be on sensors. So we'll have occupancy sensors during the nighttime. Very few people are going to be going in and out of that garage late at night, so we believe that it will be predominantly dark, other than, again, the emergency lighting. This diagram, this line is the floodplain line. So we can see that the visitor center and the sailing center are both uphill from the floodplain line, so no building that would be within the floodplain. And again, we've worked with the city to try and think about this pathway. Right now, the path that comes north along Clark Street Beach comes like this, comes through the middle of the Proposed Visitor Center, and then comes out in about this location. As we develop the plans for the visitor center, we've always maintained that we want to maintain that public access through the university. And we had proposed actually creating a new public path that continues for pedestrians and bicyclists over to the lakefront, and it was in about this location. As we reviewed the plans with city staff and particularly with the Fire Department, instead of having this be just a pedestrian and bicycle path, the Fire Department felt it would be better utilized as a fire lane. We had an opportunity, and the building was designed to bring a fire lane through the building and out onto this pathway, but the Fire Department felt that it was much better positioned with coming off of Sheridan Road and utilizing, instead of a narrow pedestrian and bicycle path, a 20-foot wide path for the fire lane that then would also serve predominantly during most of the year for pedestrians and bicyclists. There would be bollards that would be placed at this end of the fire lane so that there would be no vehicles allowed on that path other than emergency vehicles and Northwestern University maintenance vehicles in order to maintain clear plow the pathway. So we will have a path that would be, again, predominantly pedestrians and bicyclists. So Carlos noted that we're here because the building spans two lots of record, and he showed you this diagram where we have a lot of record that consists of the original property east of Sheridan Road, 158 acres, with 58 buildings, including 12 landmark buildings on it, and the second lot of record, which is basically the lake fill that occurred in the late 60s and early 70s. And as he noted, we have asked that, in fact, this project be reviewed in the context of the lot of record, which is this 158 acres, as well as the other acreage that's here that was, you know, built later as the lake fill occurred. So we believe that the standards, the only reason that we were at the Preservation Commission is this building is on the lot of record that contains landmark buildings, so that the review should be for the lot of record, which is the 158-acre lot of record. And that the documents that you have in front of you show how we believe we meet each and every one of the standards, given that lot of record. We have a diverse campus architecture. It's been developed over time. It doesn't have a single standard architecture like you might see at Stanford or other universities. We have a very diverse and eclectic group of buildings developed over time. It's a dynamic campus. This gives you some idea of that 158-acre lot of record with the red buildings being the landmark buildings. But again, a very diverse collection of buildings with heights ranging from 112 feet down to 40 feet within that lot of record. We have also shown that when we look at the comments, we believe that, again, the height of this proposed visitor center is well within the height imposed by zoning and also fits the context of the lot of record. We've looked at all of the buildings, and this gives you some idea of the buildings. Again, University Hall at 112 feet, other buildings ranging down to Daring Library at 94 feet, Fisk Hall at 73 feet, so that an 80-plus-foot building on this site, we believe, is certainly is well within the visual context of the lot of record. We have developed other buildings in the recent past that, the McCormick Tribune Center, which is just behind Fisk Hall, which again, is a glass and masonry building, is over 80 feet tall and is within 44 feet of Fisk Hall, whereas this building is over 100 feet away from Fisk Hall. So again, we believe when we look at the context of the lot of record and the standards that have been established, we meet those. This shows you, again, the McCormick Tribune Building at well over 80 feet and that the visitor center is in the same one. We're at 81 feet 4 inches for the McCormick Tribune Center, and we're at 81 feet 8 inches, so we're at four-inch difference there versus the 73 feet at Fisk Hall. And we believe, again, the size and mass of the building relates well to the lot of record. This shows you what Carlos showed, which is the context along Sheridan Road looking east. The north is to the left here, and we're coming down to south where you can see University Hall and Harris Hall. And then as we turn going east on Sheridan Road, you can see the height differentials here from University Hall through the Residence Halls, through Fisk Hall, and the Proposed Visitor Center. So again, we believe the scale and mass really works well and that we firmly believe that the visitor center as proposed satisfies all of the standards for a certificate of appropriateness and is consistent with the fabric of the campus and the existing relationships between landmark buildings and other buildings on the campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, before I call on you, I did want to take a moment to thank the Preservation Commission. I realized because of this appeal how rare appeals are. So the fact that we haven't heard many is something we don't really notice until it happens, but you have been doing excellent work and have been negotiating with people and coming out with results that people can live with. They may grumble a little to us, but they certainly have not had appeals before this. So thank you all for your work. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Naylor, could I ask you just a couple of questions? If we could go back to the, I think it was the first slide. No, that one right there. I just wanted to confirm, because there were comments about it tonight, that the area by the Sailing Center right there, you're not going to be filling in the lakefront.
Absolutely not.
Now, I noticed that the waterway going into the lagoon does not show the dunes that are currently there. Is your plan to remove those dunes?
You mean here?
Yeah, right up there.
The accumulation of sand right outside the weir is what you're talking about?
I'm talking about the dunes that are habitat for wading birds, for shorebirds.
I'm not sure.
I think we're talking about the—
This is the overflow weir for the cooling pond, and there's been some accumulation of sand there that occasionally needs to be dredged in order for, in fact, that cooling pond to work, but no, there's no intention to remove other than what's needed to maintain the open channel for water to flow. We have to maintain that open channel to meet IEPA standards, so that has to occasionally be dredged, but other than that, no.
Okay, my understanding from the Great Lakes Alliance is that that's going to require approval from the Army Corps and other state agencies to do, and I'm just wondering, they said that you knew all about that, so I'm assuming that you know that.
Well, again, we're not proposing removal of any of those quote "dunes."
Okay, so the dunes are going to remain the habitat for the shore and large wading birds. There are large, huge herons that come down the central flyway that—
The simple answer is yes.
You're going to keep them.
They will be kept.
Okay, and you're aware of the permits and regulations that govern—
Fully aware that anything to do with waterways has to go through the Army Corps of Engineers.
Okay, wonderful.
But again, we have no plans to do that, so we are not going to—
Okay, that's good. I'm happy to have you on record as far as that's concerned. I wanted to thank you and Ms. Crasno for meeting with me a little over a week ago. I found the meeting to be very useful. Because of that, I went to the Preservation Commission meeting, and I also was extremely impressed with the professionalism and the amount of time that both Northwestern and the Commission gave to consideration of this issue. I have to say that, Madam Mayor, regarding your comments, the Commission, it seemed to me, makes a great effort to work with the applicants to try to find a compromise or a mutually acceptable plan if they feel that the standards are not being met. And frankly, I thought there was a win-win here for everyone if the building were just pushed back to the north. And I'm feeling that that is still a possibility for a win-win, and I'll tell you why I'm concerned about that. I think the, I agree with the Commission that this building makes a very, very bold and large statement right on Sheridan Road. One of the concerns I had at the meeting was your presenter, and I'm sorry, I don't remember her name, said that it was the university's policy, as you're moving forward, this was in response to a question about the university's framework plan that came out three or four years ago, that it's the current policy to push parking to the edge of campus and concentrate building into the interior of the campus. And if that's true, then we're going to have more and more situations where the landmark buildings on campus are covered from public view on Sheridan Road and ringed by parking. So that's one of my concerns here, that we're opening the door to a new policy on campus of ringing it with parking. And I listened to her very carefully, and that was what she said. So that's one of my main concerns. My other concern is that the removal of the wildlife habitat. At the Preservation Commission meeting, when I met with you, you said you had the support of the Chicago Audubon Society and Libby Hill and other folks. Judy Pollock from the Chicago Audubon Society was actually at the Preservation Commission meeting, and I didn't know who she was, and when she introduced herself and started speaking to the Commission, she said that these two buildings, both the music building and the garage visitor center, would be devastating to wildlife, including birds, and that it had been misinterpreted that you had the support of the Chicago Audubon Society. I called her up again today just to make sure that I had heard her correctly, and she reiterated those statements that she made in front of the Commission. So I'm concerned that we're looking at the idea that this particular wildlife habitat, which your representative at the Commission referred to as weeds, that these weeds could just be picked up and moved over to the water treatment plant or some other area, when in fact, when you're talking about mature cottonwood trees or other trees, you just can't pick up and move mature trees. You lose a lot, especially on the edge of the shoreline where the lakefront plan has envisioned a protection of wildlife and migrating birds. So again, I see the problem here is, and not the, not your need. As we met, I recognized that you have a very strong need for a very nice visitor's center and for parking. There's no question about that. There's no question that I support whatever you want to do on your U3 campus. And perhaps that's one of the reasons why some of us on the Council hadn't been paying much attention to this, because it is in the U3 zone on your campus, and we're mostly concerned about what happens west of Sheridan Road or off-campus. But this is, again, the situation where we're really coming off-campus to create that the emergency drive that will be on 2/3 of an acre of city property, that we will be leasing to you for a dollar a year. Removing 2/3 of an acre of precious shoreline and beach property from the city is something that I have a lot of trouble with, and that's why I'm searching for a compromise. I want you to have what you need, but I would like you to have what you need on the campus itself. And if there's any way that you and the City Manager and the Police Chief, if you could go back to the original design of an emergency route, as you mentioned was your preference in the beginning of going through the building, that would go a long way to maintaining the wildlife habitat that is, again, so precious to us. It would also help, I think greatly, the image of the campus as you're making that turnaround Sheridan Road. Fisk Hall, no relation, is the first thing that you see, and it's a welcoming portal to the campus that I think needs to be respected as well.
So a couple of points, Alderman. When I spoke tonight about, you know, multiple meetings with Judy Pollock and with Libby and others, I didn't say we had their full support. I said what that led us to was understanding how we should put in bird-friendly glass, how we should deal with the landscape, make it bird-friendly landscape. So even tonight, I did not say we had their support. I said we've met with them multiple times and as a result of that, changed what we did in the building. So, and again, on moving it north, we just can't physically move it north because the current parking deck is there. We have to maintain the access from that parking deck, from the west end of that deck. We've moved it as far north as we can, actually cantilevering over the parking deck at this very north end, so it's actually cantilevering over there as much as possible, but we still need to preserve the access that comes into the parking deck. Right now, we're trying to create a new accessway that goes to the upper part of the deck, which is actually in this location. We're going to be covering up the lower part with the building so that we're actually moving from here and here to here and there. So we've moved it as far north as we can into the campus, again, overlapping the deck with a cantilever so that we don't have any further room to move. And I know that the discussion has been fine, if you just take this and put it up here. But again, what we're doing is that would be losing too much parking. We're taking the parking out in order to create this space, which is this beautiful green space coming from the top of the hill down to the beach and then continuing this access. And again, as I noted earlier, the fire lane is something that was our commitment to the community, to say that we want to continue to maintain that accessway that was used for pedestrians and bicyclists that came through the current site of the visitor center. So this location is actually one that we think provides a substantial benefit to the Evanston community. I know there was a question asked earlier, what benefit is there to the community about, you know, the construction of this? And we're saying that we believe that that's a substantial benefit. Without that, it's cut off, and there is no access from this bike path to this location at the lakefront.
Well, I guess what I would—
So we believe that that's a substantial benefit in order to do that. And then the question was, as long as we were going to provide that continuation of the lakefront path for the benefit of citizens of Evanston, then the Fire Department only provided a slightly wider path. And so this is one where this would have been in place anyway, and now the question And so this is one where, this would have been in place anyway, and now the question is, what's the width?
Well, I guess, and this will be my last comment, but, for the moment, but I, I guess I would say that as you're asking us to look at this building in context with all of the other landmark, or all of the other buildings on your lot of record, I would ask you to look at parking in context with the entire campus, and does there need to be that much parking right here? Can you make the parking a little bit smaller by pushing it back? I think this is just such a sensitive area for so many different reasons, that it would behoove you, and I trust that the university could do this, I know you do wonderful things with your other buildings, and if you just took the time to do this and work with the city, I know everyone would appreciate it very much. We took a lot of time on the, on the tennis court issue, even though that's, I, pales by comparison, but through, through negotiations there, we came to a wonderful agreement that I think everyone is happy with here. And, but here, we need to work on this as well, because we have a lot of really unhappy and very thoughtful people, including those that serve on the Preservation Commission.
So, again, to your point about parking, you had mentioned the, the issue of the framework plan calling for parking being moved to the periphery of the campus, that's true, and in fact, the framework plan said that this was the location at the south end of the campus for parking.
I, I believe the testimony from your representative was that at the south end of the campus was to be academic buildings that would encircle parking, so that parking was not visible.
Right, the unfortunate thing about the Sasaki plan is that if you look at the Sasaki plan, and maybe it's better to go back, well, this one shows it. The Sasaki plan actually showed buildings that continued all the way out right along this setback line, right along the property line, all the way out to the beach. And you can see that that is, again, the floodplain line is in, in this area. So that, that actually set of plans that Sasaki developed really didn't take into account where the floodplain existed. And the framework plan is not a prescriptive plan, it doesn't say exactly what we're going to do.
It, it wasn't the framework plan that she was talking about, it was in response to a question about the framework plan.
Right.
And she said exactly what you're saying now, which is, that's just a guideline, it's not something that we, that is etched in stone. Really, what our policy is right now is to put parking on the edges of campus, which the, the interesting thing to me was that in terms of trying to figure out where we're, where we struggle between Evanston as a community and Northwestern as a, as a university, is the way we look at the land that we have. We're outside looking in and you're inside looking out, and so what happens along those edges is really important. And I think, again, with the U3 zoning there, the city has really respected the fact that with the perimeter as beautiful as it is, whatever you do on the inside doesn't really matter, so that the McCormick Building, for example, higher in concrete and glass behind Fisk Hall, doesn't matter, that's on the interior of the campus. But something that's pushed out so far in the front, especially close to Sheridan Road, really does have an impact, and I think that's what's reflected in the Preservation Commission's concerns.
Thank you. And again, just on the, the issue of parking at the periphery, doesn't mean that it's going to be out on Sheridan Road. In the case of the north campus garage, you may have seen an announcement that came out in a couple of weeks ago about the lakefront athletic facility proposal and the north campus garage. That north campus garage is being proposed just due west of the Sports and Aquatic Center, abutting the Sports and Aquatic Center. So even though we're saying it's pushing parking to the periphery, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's out at the edge of Sheridan Road. That is well within the, the center of the campus, and we believe that that would be, again, the framework plan looks at one major garage at the north end of the campus, a major garage at the south end of the campus, and underground parking at the, the center of the campus. So that, that's what the framework plan calls for. This is the first step. Very soon, we'll be applying for permit for the second step, which is the beginning of the garage at the north end of the campus. And until such time as, I don't know, another 15 years or so passes, we won't be coming forward for what's in the center of the campus. But again, we're looking at major capital projects, we're looking at also how do we conform to the city of Evanston zoning requirement for parking? So we believe that the city's zoning requirement for parking is a pretty good match to what the actual demand on campus is. And as we undertook the framework plan, we worked with Sasaki and with Traffic Consultants to take a look at the parking demand on both the north, the center, and the south end of the campus, to really determine what should be built out and maintained as parking. And in fact, that 1,100 cars that you talked about is what was actually determined to be the demand at the south end of the campus, and what we really need to do in order to satisfy zoning requirements. The number of spaces that are being taken out with the deletion, there's a parking lot that exists right here, that's becomes the south end of the School of Music Building, and this parking deck takes out about 325 parking spaces. The garage that's part of the visitor's center is 435 spaces, so we have a net gain of only 110 spaces. And this, again, is a front door for many citizens of Evanston and the North Shore, where we have music and theater events here, and with the new 400-seat recital hall being located in this area, we believe that that was really appropriate to have at least another 110 parking spaces in order to accommodate additional demand that would be placed on the south end of the campus. So we believe that this is the right number of spaces, both to meet zoning requirements and what the demand will be for the services, again, for both the university during the daytime, as well as Evanstonians and others in the evening.
Alderman Fisk, are you done?
For the moment.
Okay, thank you. Alderman, go over.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to continue the discussion with a motion, and my motion is to grant the university's appeal of the Preservation Commission's denial of the certificate of appropriateness. Do you get where I'm going?
I think I understood that, is there a second?
Is there a second? But I do have a couple of questions, if I may. Confirm for me that the proposed building is not in a historic district, it's in a landmark lot of record, am I right?
That's correct. The building itself is on the landmark lot of record.
And, and so it's not part technically of any historic district, it's on university property, being proposed to be built as of right, fully compliant with all of our zoning requirements. It's just the, because part of the building implicates the landmark lot of record, that it implicates then our, our Preservation Commission and the standards for review.
Correct.
Is that right? Is there any standard that tells us we have to limit the review to the corner of this landmark lot of record, or is the landmark lot of record conceivably part of our deliberation is we would apply the standards?
Well, I believe the way the Commission, I'm sorry-
Does it even speak to that?
Not directly, but what it does is limits the Commission to review projects from what they can see from the public roadway and what is visually compatible. And one of the issues with the Commission was that the campus itself, it was not something that they can see, if you're standing on their public roadway in front of the building, you can only see the garage, the visitor's center, and Fisk Hall as their most immediate building.
I, I think the part I'm grappling with is, is the, what now looks like kind of an arbitrary landmark lot of record, which is an enormous lot, that we can't look at and consider, and I think I'm, that's how I'm looking at it, is everything that's part of this campus, and everything that I see pretty much every other day along Sheridan Road as part of, for me, which is the context of what this building fits into. I did, over the summer, also meet with some of our bird advocates, and while I think I agree with Mr. Naylor that they are not endorsing this project, their concerns, though, as expressed in the meetings this summer, have been addressed, and that was about concern for migratory bird populations and the glass sheathing on the outside of, part of the building, and that being an attractive nuisance and potential hazard to the migratory birds, we're thinking May and October as they fly through. And the other issue was the landscape around the building, you don't want to put trees too close to the building because the birds will fly then out of the trees and into the building. And I think those two concerns have been accommodated in a really thoughtful way, in fact, a way that puts this building in a different plane for bird friendliness than a lot of other buildings along the lakefront, think McCormick Place. And the other concerns that came up over the course of the summer from residents were, number one, the perception that they own that lakefront path, and I heard from a number of residents, including some First Ward residents, that their concern was that this path not be interrupted, that, not even temporarily, actually, and felt that the, their most important consideration was continuation of the lakefront path for cyclists, pedestrians, and in this case, to accommodate a fire truck. So for my purposes, this plan has accommodated all of those concerns. In this case, we will not only have kind of perception of ownership over that lakefront path, we actually will own it, we're just going to lease it to the university to maintain it for us. We have lakefront paths, bike paths, along our, our, our lakefront, and I think this is, this one, is it comes around the building as a continuation of that path that we know so well, and that we've improved ourselves. So those are my thoughts, and I'll be voting in support.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson?
Thank you, and again, I'm going to thank the members of the community because we did get a great deal of input on this, and I, we, I feel like this has been a good conversation to have. I will point out, a lot of people wrote to me and were concerned that this was, quote, sprung on them, or kind of phoned at the last minute, but it's, it's really not. I saw this in February when it was announced, and it was covered by the press, so it's, it's been out there for a while, including some of the, the renderings as well. But as far as the project itself goes, context and vision are very subjective, and some people like glass, some people like bricks, some people don't like either, but as some of the materials submitted by Northwestern reflect, we don't have a campus that's like, say, a University of Virginia or another campus that is very consistent in, in its appearance. What we really have here is a campus that reflects evolution over time. I tried to look at the, both the context of the buildings and the historical context as well, and found some fascinating things. I looked at aerial views from the 30s, 50s, 60s, 70s, and 80s, and as probably most people were aware, Fisk Hall was lakefront property, that was right up to the shore with a parking lot, and all of this area that we're talking about didn't exist. And I did give that some thought, you know, what we're talking about is the vision of the university, it's not my vision, and I don't really think that it's my vision that should govern the vision of the university. They, they created this additional area, they have created this habitat for wildlife, they've created interesting buildings. I don't like every one of them, but I'm not expected to. I'm sure, you could run down the list and, and find ones we like and ones we don't like. But what it is, is it's, in many ways, it's a historical record, and the university has gone to great expense and great pains to preserve some of those aspects. They've won awards, I've, I've seen the, the extensive detail that goes into a lot of the preservation efforts. And this is different. People have talked about the visual impact. It's a visitor's center, it's probably supposed to make a visual impact. The important aspects to me, and this is an area, I've, I've literally gone by this path in this spot thousands of times, literally thousands of times. I run by there, I bike path by there, I walk with my kids by there. The, the section that we're talking about, frankly, it's the nastiest part of the stretch. You know, you go around that corner, there's the old, there's the, there's the garage, it's the part I least like going by. And I've considered how this is going to affect that, and it's, it, the green space, it's going to open up that area, it's going to improve the visual access to the lake. The trees that have grown there, again, looking at these aerial renderings, it's a lot of brush, time passes, it grows, it's overgrown, it doesn't look that great. I understand that there is wildlife there, but again, this entire area was something that was created and didn't even exist previously. The preservation of the path is important, I think for Evanston residents, we want to be able to get over and get to that lake fill area, and, you know, that's not our property, we don't have to get over there. So I'm appreciative of the, of the desire to accommodate the access to there. A project like this, I don't think there's any way, any way you can make everyone happy. I think all we can do is, is just strive for the best that can be developed. This is going to do things like take parking off the streets and out of the neighborhoods. I get complaints about the inability to get to the dog beach or the lake when, whether it's orientation, whatever these events at Northwestern are, and it fills up the parking, so if, if I had my way, we'd put lots of bike racks in, and we wouldn't even need the parking garage, but it's not my way and it's not realistic, so. I think that this is an appropriate project, I respect the, the view and the opinions of the Preservation Commission, I think that they put a lot of time and effort into it. I don't think that they were wrong, but in my opinion, I do think that the university has met what they need to meet in order to go forward with the project.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I have a number of things to say, we all are, are being very thoughtful about this tonight. I understand completely the university's need to have a visitor's center. In the last couple of years, I've been to a number of universities' visitor's centers, and I can say I can, I have appreciated the ones that were easy to find, that had accessible parking, and were designed well for the, the needs that they, that they were, their purposes. So I think that obviously Northwestern is hoping to improve their visitor's center, and I, and I think that this building does that for them. So I, I, I support their, their desire to have that, I appreciate the fact that they're increasing the parking in that area, and I think it will make for a much safer Sheridan Road, because I live on Hinman and I regularly see the confused groups who are taking the tours. But I, and my but is, is of several points. There has been an enormous amount of misinformation in the community about this project. Alderman Wilson stays a little bit more tuned in than some of the rest of us do in terms of following this. I knew about it over the summer, but I have to say I did not know what the plans of this looked like. I knew the path was closed, I was concerned about that. I did work on the lakefront master plan for the year that it took for us to do, and among the issues that were critically important were maintaining the dune scape for migratory birds and the wildlife that we have on the, on the lakefront, and also maintaining a night, a dark sky. And this is, the dark sky concept is now accepted widely, and we designed the lakefront path on our property to have a dark sky, so that there was not light pollution upward, that when you had lights, they were targeted down. That does concern me about this parking garage, and I'd like to get a lot more information about that. I've been hearing about that from a number of people who also worked on the lakefront master plan, who have concerns about what this parking garage will look like at night. I know that that's been a part of the consideration, I don't understand how the occupancy lighting works, does that mean the lights go on and off, and on and off? And how late is the parking garage open, is it open 24 hours? Those are issues that the community really cares a lot about, and I don't think they have the right information yet on. The, another consideration that I have is, I walked this, this area with the plans, I met with Mr. Naylor and Ms. Crasno last week, and they gave me a set of the plans, and on Sunday afternoon, yesterday afternoon, I walked the, the entire area, I plotted out, found the survey sticks that showed the 20-foot wide path, found the point, the building corner point, I found the, all of the places of where this, this building will be, and like Alderman Wilson, this is an area I walk past probably four or five times a week. Some people think that cottonwoods, which are not weeds that are there, are native dune trees, okay. And we have, as anyone knows who walks along there in the spring, blackbirds, red-winged blackbirds nest there and dive-bomb you if you're not wearing the right headgear. So I do, I am concerned. I saw the trees that were marked for removal- I saw the trees that were marked for removal there, and they are the large ones, but the ones that are on the university property, and that's fine, but there are also a number of them that are on our property to accommodate the fire lane. And some of them are large, they aren't the largest cottonwoods, but they will, when they are removed, leave the area open, wide open, with some scrubed dunes grass, a few very small trees. And I don't think the community knows enough about that to understand how that path is going to work. So I can't support the motion to move forward tonight, Alderman Grover. I think the community does deserve, because this is going to be a significant change on the lakefront, I think the university has clearly hired a fine architecture firm, and more information needs to go out into the community for people to understand that there's no dredging that's going to happen, that the lighting, what the lighting, how the lighting of the garage will operate. At my meeting with Mr. Naylor and Ms. Craznow last week, there was a discussion about the Audubon Society and how representatives had met with them. I left that meeting, and I apologize for my misunderstanding, I left that meeting with the understanding that the Audubon Society had looked this over and had given it their endorsement. You're correct that you did not say exactly those words to me, it was my impression as I left the meeting. I'd like to know more about what the Audubon Society does think about this. Our minutes of the Preservation Commission meeting are not detailed enough. I think the community should know about that. Another point is that Northwestern is going to be contributing to a lakefront habitat area in front of our water plant, and that's not included in these, in this packet of information. I think it's terrific that Northwestern is doing that, the community should know more about that, and have, hold, consider that in the context of this project. So I can't support that. I think what, the best thing to do here would be to, because it's a special order of business, and special orders of business cannot be held and can only be tabled, what I had planned to do tonight was to move to table this, to give the community two more weeks to understand fully what is being built there. As I said, I'm in support of Northwestern having a visitor's center, but I'm also in support of having the most information, most accurately transmitted out into the community. So I will have to vote no tonight, but I have one other issue that I am going to raise, and this relates to, if the Madam Mayor will permit me to do this, to matter, item number A19, which is the visitor's center fire lane ordinance. This is for introduction tonight, and what I'd like to see Northwestern come back with is a plan to plant at their expense on the east side of that fire lane, the same type of dunescape that the city has planted around our Clark Street Beach House. We went to a great deal of effort to plant a very dense dunescape on either side of the Clark Street Beach House, and it's all native plants that don't need watering, and they're the natural plants that you would find on any dune. I think if we're going to permit Evans, excuse me, Northwestern to use our property for a good purpose, for a fire lane, then we should request of them that they plant a dunescape, as we've done, on the other side of Clark Street Beach, in return for our giving you access to our land. And I think it's in the benefit of everyone, it will be in the benefit for Northwestern and this building, because it will be the natural dunescape that we have elsewhere. And that, and that, and I think that that would be a fair exchange for having the fire access across our property, to make the dune what it should look like naturally. And I agree, Alderman Wilson, that the lakefront changes all the time. I mean, as anyone knows, we're at almost a historic low level of the water. You know, my husband grew up going to the lake in the early 60s, and he always talks about the enormous dunes they had, never realizing that his childhood occurred at the lowest point of the lake ever in the 20th century. So it's constantly evolving, and so I think what the whole lakefront master plan was designed to do was to try and keep as much of it natural as we possibly can, living in our built environment. So that's what my request is with respect to A19, and that's my explanation of why I'm going to be voting for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree with your request for dunescape.
Thank you.
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There was just one other comment that I wanted to make. I agree with Alderman Wynn, and Alderman Grover, I hope that you would consider withdrawing your motion, just to allow this to go another couple of weeks. Northwestern has indicated that they would be happy to meet with the neighborhood. Unfortunately, we didn't, we tried to get something together before the Preservation Commission at 6 o'clock, that was just with a couple of days' notice, we weren't able to do that. So I think out of respect for not only the commission, but also the neighborhood's concerns, we would, I would appreciate that if you would consider withdrawing your motion. The other thing that I just wanted to say is that I do appreciate everything that the university is doing, and especially connecting the bicycle path, but remember, anyone who does landfill, especially lakefill, the circuit court has said over again, especially in the case of Loyola University, that if you do, if you fill in the lake, you have to provide a significant public benefit, and that public benefit includes public access to the property that is, that is the subject of landfill. So I appreciate that the university understands that, and that you're agreeing with the spirit of the law. But I would ask Alderman Grover that you consider Alderman Wynn's request.
All right, it's, there seemed to be no further lights for discussion, so it has been moved and seconded to Alderman Grover to approve, to grant the appeal. All right. So I think we should have a roll call vote on this, City Clerk.
Alderman Tindham?
Aye.
Alderman Grover?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Wynn?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Holmes?
Aye.
Six to two with one reclusion.
Six to two, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, the second item of special order of business is a much-delayed presentation by Public Works Director Suzette Robinson regarding sidewalk repairs. Is it the council's wish to move forward with that this evening?
We already made Suzette stay the last meeting.
And the one before.
And the one, don't tell me, really, did we?
Yes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
This is number three.
You all, could we please have a short version of Suzette's?
Sure. Talk fast, Suzette.
Okay, I didn't pass this out again, I've given it to you.
My apologies for this, Suzette.
Do we really have to read it? Just tell us.
Good evening once again, Madam Mayor, City Council, Clerk Green, and the City Manager, I'm Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works, and I'm here to talk to you about sidewalk maintenance. The city has a variety of sidewalk maintenance programs, 50/50 curb and sidewalk, block curb, ADA ramps, and new sidewalk construction. We have over 247 miles of concrete sidewalk. In 2011, we spent $220,000 and replaced 43,000 square feet of sidewalk. In 2010, we spent $144,000 and replaced 29,000 square feet. I guess the program in question that we really wanted to talk about is the 50/50 curb and sidewalk program. The program is developed to assist property owners to ensure prompt replacement of damaged sidewalks. Under the program, the city pays 50%, and the resident pays, or property owner pays the other 50%. The city sometimes perform the work in-house if it's a smaller job, or we did a little more work this year because we didn't have any money budgeted in CIP, or we use outside contractors. And eligibility is open to any property owner, and Evanston can participate. Once, upon notification of area of concern, and that notification could be a 3-1-1 request, it can be, it can come from police, it can come from a variety of sources, or the property owner can just simply decide that they want to replace their sidewalk, they cite it up, they sign up. The Streets Division comes out and makes an inspection, and they perform a temporary repair. Once an area of concern is reported, we try to make a repair within one business day. And so then that location is placed on the list, and a letter is sent out, engineering sends a letter out and alerts the residents of the 50/50 program, which is voluntary. So the project's limits are set, and then we send the project out for bid, construct a job, and once we receive payment, then we construct a job. And it usually happens in August and September of every year. Our temporary maintenance procedure, which is the area that we want to talk about, within one working day, our business district performs temporary repairs, and we use a cold patch material to a perceived area of concern. And one of the reasons why we use the cold patch material, the material is readily available, and it is something that our crews tend to have and be using every day. So it's very easy, so that if a call comes in, that we can very quickly go out and make that repair. And then, once again, permanent repairs, and I'd say 95% of residents, when they receive that 50/50 letter, will sign up to have that replacement performed. And if a resident chooses not to participate, city crews will reply, reapply cold patch as requested. And since I've been here, I've only had one resident who refused to replace their sidewalk, that just wasn't interested in the 50/50 program. So I think that's better than 95% of the concerns that we've had. So to give you an idea of what it costs for us to do this, we do about 175 to 200 locations per year, and it's performed by a two-person crew that's doing over 20 other tasks, from picking up litter, patching potholes, patching asphalt in the alleys and streets. And then, so that's the material cost. So it costs us about $46 per location, considering the manpower, equipment, et cetera. So each year, we spend just under $9,000 to do this temporary repair. Once again, I talked about special replacements that may be 100% funded, block curb and sidewalk, those are areas where we typically don't have sidewalks at all. When we first establish a new sidewalk, we may, as a part of redoing the roads, actually build those sidewalks. And then, you know, when it's done in tiff areas, et cetera, the city will fund 100%. Parkway tree impacts, when it, the reason why the area of concern has been raised is a result of a parkway tree, the city also will cover that repair 100%. So some of, one of the things we were asked to take a look at is what I'm calling a more robust temporary maintenance repair program. And that is, you know, primarily because the cold patch that we put down is quite unsightly. And believe it or not, there's, you know, partially a reason for that. Our program is voluntary. Unsightly makes it a little, it's kind of our way of making it a little more mandatory, too, because we have more people, because of the unsightliness, that are far more likely to sign up, to do the repairs. But that's a side benefit, but it really has to do more with convenience and how our crews are set up to respond. Some of the more robust options that we may have are mudjacking, which is raising the panels up when we have sunken concrete, or concrete grinding, when there's just a lip that's been raised, and skim coating using epoxy material, and that epoxy material is very similar in coating to concrete. But once again, all of these fixes are still temporary and would require some additional maintenance later on. So, and then, you know, we may have to look at an ordinance to adopt this change if residents were to share in the cost, because these are all more costly options. The benefits, you know, mudjacking and concrete pairs, they last a little longer, and it may delay replacement requirements for a few years, well, several years. The white or gray epoxy used as skim coat result in a patch that more closely matches the concrete. Some of the challenges is that additional personnel and equipment will be needed to perform any of the three options. The cost of epoxy is much greater than cold patch, and as I mentioned, skim coating is temporary and will require replacement pretty close to what the cold patch temporary fix would require. And then residents would be a little less inclined if the temporary repair looks permanent, and then that would create an additional area of concern that the city would have to pay attention to from a liability standpoint. So a cost of options, so what I listed is what would be required. Mudjacking would not be a fix for every type of area of concern, that would only be if we have a sunken panel situation, so we would still have to have a menu of options. And in order to do that, we, it would cost us over $100, you know, per location, and that doesn't include the cost of rental equipment that we would need to perform the mudjacking operation, and so we would need a three-man crew to do that. Concrete grinding, same type of scenario in terms of added cost, two-man crew and new equipment. And then the skim coating is based on a two-man crew and existing equipment. And so when I'm pointing out these additional cost options and additional personnel, those are additional personnel, because this becomes a full-time operation for us to just maintain 200 locations, we need the additional personnel and a dedicated crew to just take care of these functions, whereas now it's incorporated within our existing personnel. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
Thank you, Director Robinson. I appreciate you looking at the different options. This came up because of several residents in my ward, as well as other people I've actually talked to, looking at the unsightliness of the, basically dumping, they call it cold patch, but let's call it black asphalt. It's really embarrassing on our city streets. It's not only in our neighborhoods, it's also in the downtown. My son was recently visiting, and we were walking near Chipotle, and he said, "What is going on here with this, the asphalt on the, our lovely street down there?" And he's like, "That's really, you know, this is a kid, you know? This is embarrassing." I don't, I think we can do better than this, and what I asked for was these options, and I really appreciate that, and I think it does give us an opportunity to say, the cold patching is about $46 per spot, how much would it cost to do these other options, and are the residents in front of their homes willing to share in that cost? That makes a lot of sense to me, and this is, and it would be a lot less expensive than the full sidewalk replacement. A lot of people can't afford that. It's, a full sidewalk replacement, even a 50/50 option, is a lot of, a lot of money. So if we could explore these three options in a cost share, seems to make a lot of sense to me, and, uh, we, I just keep seeing more and more of this asphalt. I think probably every ward is seeing it, and I'm not sure if you're getting complaints as well, but I, I really appreciate you giving us these options.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, it, it's obviously the ugliest thing that we do, but secondly, it seems to me dangerous. I, I think the broken sidewalk is safer. Um, these big, black patches, your feet stick to them, um, I've seen people stumble on them. I just think we ought to develop a policy to just absolutely do away with this form of repair. And it's budget time. We can budget in this other method, skim coat.
Uh, thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Suzette, can you say, uh, tell us, how much does it cost to repair, to replace a square of concrete? And, and what, is that four-by-four, or is it five-by-five? What is it?
Four, please, four-by-four typically.
So, when, how, how much does it, for instance, if someone has one square that's, uh, crumbled in front of their house, how much does that cost?
I, I don't have that, um, off the top of my head. It's very inexpensive, I just don't know what the number is.
That, well, yeah, that's what I, I thought. I, I didn't think it was very expensive, but I also, um, and so, and I agree that we, we should be maintaining our sidewalks, and I don't like this, uh, cold patch either, but, um, my, one of my concerns would be this skim coat. Uh, I think that's really, um, that's kind of asking for more trouble, because, uh, skim coating really doesn't last very long, uh, and I say this from personal experience, and it looks awful when it's deteriorating. Uh, so, I, I would not be in support of skim coating, because, uh, it really wears off in about two years with our winters, and by the second year, it looks worse than the broken sidewalk. Um, you know, I think mudjacking, if we could offer that to, in some instances, uh, would be, you know, a great alternative to having to replace the entire, the entire square. So, I'd like to know a little bit more about how much it would cost. You know, I'm, I'm thinking about a house near me that's got three broken squares. Um, it's, it's almost gravel at this point, and I'd really like to be able to call up that constituent and say, "Hey, it only is going to be this much money to do that," so. So could we get a little bit more information?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. Um, and my question was along the lines of Alderman Wynn's. Uh, you, you listed all the alternatives to the cold patch as temporary, I'm just wondering, um, what's best possible scenario for something like skim coating or, um, the other things that you threw out?
Mudjacking. I love that.
Mudjacking.
I just wanted a chance to say it tonight.
Um, the, the, the best alternative for us is replacement, um, and right now, our replacement, um, program is voluntary. So, you know, once the city receives notification of, of an area of concern, we can be subject, we have to react and we have to respond. So, that response, um, right now, is the, the fastest thing that we can do to, to mitigate whatever the area of concern is, is cold patch, because, um, once we receive notice, we have to act. Um, and because we're requiring, or our, our current policy, um, allows for the, the residents' reaction to be voluntary, um, it's, they don't have to, um, respond to our request to replace their sidewalk. Um, so, um, we could replace sidewalk faster if it was, um, perhaps a mandatory situation, um, which is, that's similar to how Skokie does their replacement. They replace it and they send your, uh, through special assessment, it's assigned to their water bill, and they get fifty percent of the bill when the sidewalk is replaced once notice is made. So, that's another option to, to consider in terms of a faster replacement cycle, um, and, I mean, that, that would be the, the, the other option that, um, you know, perhaps through, uh, contracting out and making the program so that it happened faster, that the replacement happened, um, you know, much faster. So, but, but I will say, with regards to, uh, the downtown, um, Chipotle, um, location, uh, because that came up in, in, um, a ward meeting with, with Alderman Fisk, and, um, the residents were much more appreciative of the fact that we were going to replace, that we didn't spend, expend the city time to go through, tear out the, the, the larger areas and reset the, the, the bricks in that area, because we were going to be replacing all of that sidewalk. So, it was a little unsightly, and they were willing to, to put up with that, because we have to look at the efficiency, uh, of the resources that we have. We only have, um, we're, um, we're working bare bones, you know, um, and we're probably the most e- efficient that, that we have been, and we just don't have, we have to stop doing something. So, in order for us to, to change the program with the existing staffing levels. So either we stop patching potholes in the alleys, so we can spend more time on sidewalks, if it's going to happen in-house, or we have to have a mandatory program. Something has to change in order for us to change, I guess is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Could you bring us, um, a, a draft of a mandatory program?
Yes.
Seeing no further lights, thank you very much, Suzette.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, just so I'm clear, um, Alderman Rainey just asked for a draft of a mandatory program. Is there any other option, or you just would like to see a draft of a mandatory program?
Could, I'd, I'd like to get the information about how much each, each square costs.
Okay.
And then also...
I will be a part of the draft program. We would have to know how much.
I just want to be clear, because I want to be efficient in your time and our time.
And I would like to know how much it would really cost on the options program of doing a cost sharing with a resident if they don't want the asphalt thrown down in front of them, their house, if, what the, all, even the temporary options are on what, how we would do that with cost sharing with that resident.
Okay, and then that would be like a fifty-fifty cost sharing?
Yeah.
Okay. So, a, 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 a draft mandatory program, uh, the breakdown of the costs of the various types, including the replacement of the, of the sidewalk, and then the, uh, the final point was a, a fifty-fifty sharing for, for patching other than the asphalt patching. Um, and Madam Mayor, uh, as was mentioned, the budget is out. Um, is this something you'd like to consider prior to the completion of the budget?
We need to see...
I'm just trying to manage workload, so, um, you have a budget...
Maybe yes and maybe no.
Well, we have a, you have a budget workshop next Monday, the twenty-ninth, um, then the following is, I believe, on Saturday, November tenth, so why don't we shoot for having it by Saturday, November tenth? Does that seem reasonable? I'm seeing more or less some nods and, okay.
Yes.
So by, by this November tenth meeting, we'll have this as an additional item for that budget workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
It's like the old days. Thank you, Madam Mayor. The consent agenda. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening, and we, well, first of all, we'll do the minutes for the council meeting of, uh, September twenty-fourth, and approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of October eighth. The Administration Public Works Committee met this evening and asked your approval for the payroll through, uh, October seven, in the amount of two million, six hundred nineteen thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and eleven cents. The city bills through, um, October twenty-three, in the amount of two million, uh, six hundred eighty-six thousand, three hundred dollars and fifty-nine cents. Committee requests your approval, uh, to authorize the manager to sign a contract for insurance consulting services with Mesro Financial Services, Inc., uh, of Chicago, in the total amount of forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. We also ask your approval, as well as the Transportation and Parking Committee, um, ask your approval also, to provide free holiday parking in the city's three downtown self-park garages, uh, and Lot Sixty, located at twelve-thirty-four Chicago Avenue, for weekdays between five and twelve midnight, and all day on Saturday, beginning Thursday, November twenty-second, through, uh, first of the year, January first, Tuesday, two thousand and thirteen. We ask your approval also, uh, to have the city manager sign a three-year intergovernmental agreement between the Chicago Transit Authority and the Evanston Police Department for uniformed, uh, patrols on the CTA line and the CTA elevated platforms. The funding, uh, will be by the CTA, and it is estimated at two hundred thousand, one hundred twelve dollars per calendar year, with a contract rate of thirty-eight dollars per hour. We recommend council authorize the manager to sign an agreement with Evanston, uh, School District Two-O-Two for the sale of rock salt in the amount of sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents per ton, which includes a ten percent administrative and handling fee for the period of November fifteen through April fifteenth. Um, next, we ask your approval for the same agreement, however, with District Sixty-Five, uh, and that is for all the same amounts. This is for action. Next, we ask your approval, uh, to authorize the manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Village of Skokie for use and maintenance of Skokie's Fire Station Seventeen Training Tower at eighty-one fifty-seven Central Park in Skokie. The initial participation cost to the city of Evanston will be two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Um, there'll be ongoing maintenance agreement, um, and the funding will be from the capital improvement program, and then the maintenance will be from the fire department account, uh, budget account. Next, we ask your approval, uh, for Resolution Seventy-two R twelve, by which the city council would authorize the transfer of seven hundred and four thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars of motor fuel tax funds for general maintenance of streets by the city forces. Um, the fund transfer was approved as part of the two thousand and twelve budget. Next, Resolution Seventy-four R twelve, uh, would authorize the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with SWANQ for the provision of health insurance as a component unit of the city within the intergovernmental personal benefits cooperative. SWANQ will be responsible for all insurance premium costs and fees, and will also receive increases and decreases in planned costs equal to the city's planned costs each year. Uh, next is, um, Ordinance Sixty-two O twelve...
Excuse me, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Braithwaite.
Do you take that one off?
Oh, yes. A-eleven?
Yes.
Okay. A-eleven is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Um, that is for introduction, as you know, just for introduction. Okay. Um, next, uh, we, uh, the committee asks your approval, uh, for the introduction of Ordinance, uh, One Hundred and Sixteen O twelve, which amends Section Seven-two-three of the Evanston City Code, uh, to include "drive" as an available street designation. Hmm. Next, we request your approval of Ordinance One Twenty-six O twelve, which modifies a previously adopted Ordinance Twenty-eight O eleven that authorizes the city to borrow funds from the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency Water, Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the construction of the large diameter sewer rehabilitation Phase One project. Um, this modifies the ordinance and authorizes the city to borrow up to four million dollars. Debt service will be paid from the sewer fund. Also for introduction, um, is, uh, Ordinance One Thirteen O twelve, uh, which, uh, amends the city code to increase the number of Class B liquor licenses from sixteen to seventeen to permit issuance of a liquor license to Twenty-Seven Live LLC at, uh, Ten Twelve Fourteen Church Street. This is for introduction, and Madam Mayor, I'm going to also move to suspend the rules, uh, and the committee chair will deal with, um, action on this ordinance. Next, uh, A-fifteen. We ask your approval, uh, to introduce Ordinance Once, One Eighteen O twelve, which amends subsection, uh, Three-Four-Six-D of the city code, uh, as amended, to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses from twenty-five to twenty-four due to the closure of, uh, Mecca Fresh, I'm sorry, Mecca Fresh at eighteen forty, um, Oak Avenue. Uh, Madam Mayor, this is for introduction, I'm going to move suspension of the rules on this matter, since the business is currently closed. Um, next, Ordinance One Twenty-two O twelve, uh, request, uh, approval to introduce this ordinance, which amends, um, subsection Three-Four-Six-Y of the Evanston City Code, uh, to increase the number of Class Y, Class Y liquor licenses from two to three to permit the issuance of Wine Goddess LLC at seven-oh-two Main Street. Um, this is for introduction. Next, we ask your approval...
Alderman?
Sorry, Alderman.
I, I understand that the materials have been received by the city attorney for that, so if, perhaps if we could suspend the rules as well on that.
I'm going to leave that to the committee chair.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not willing to suspend the rules on that at this time.
On the Wine Goddess?
Until I have all the information, which can be given during the regular course of...
Okay.
So it's being introduced, the committee chair can suspend the rules. Um, next is Ordinance, uh, One Twenty-three O twelve. We recommend, uh, introduction of this ordinance, which amends subsection Three-Four-Six-B-One of the Evanston City Code, as amended, to increase the number of B-one liquor licenses from five to six to permit issuance of Cheezys Evanston LLC, doing business as Cheezys Pub and Grub, at six-twenty-two Davis Street. This is for introduction, and also, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move suspension of the rules for this matter, and the committee chair will deal with the, uh, motion for action. Next is Ordinance, uh, One Twenty-four O twelve. This amends subsection Three-Four-Six-B-One of the Evanston City Code, as amended, to increase the number of Class B-one liquor license, uh, uh, from, let's see, to seven, with adoption of Ordinance One Twenty-three O twelve, which is before this, to permit issuance to Clark on O rington, doing business as JT's Bar and Grill. Um, I'm going to move introduction, I think this is one of the, that we don't have every, all the information.
I think we do have it on that one.
Well, I'm going to leave it so that we can get all the details. Um, next is Ordinance One Twenty-eight O twelve, the visitors...
Would you, would you remove Alderman Rainey, please?
Oh, right, of course. A-nineteen, uh, is off the consent agenda, that has to do with the fire lane, um, at Northwestern. Next, Ordinance, uh, One Oh-Nine O twelve, amends, uh, Title Three, Chapter Four, Section Six of the city code, uh, to create a liquor license classification applicable to craft beer breweries. Um, if adopted, P-one liquor licensees will be permitted to offer for retail sale their craft beer for consumption onsite or offsite. This is for action tonight. Next, we have Planning and Development Committee. Committee met this evening, and, um, I'm removing, uh, P-one from the consent agenda, that will be addressed by the committee chair.
Alderman Tendem?
Uh, I will wait for the committee chair.
Okay.
Um, okay, P-two, um, this is the plan development at six-thirty-five Chicago Avenue. We recommend, uh, introduction of Ordinance One Nineteen O twelve, amending the plan development as granted in Ordinance Thirty-Six O twelve, adopted May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve by the council, for the development of a new Walgreens at six-thirty-five Chicago Avenue. Uh, next, Ordinance, uh, One Twenty O twelve is for introduction. The committee recommends, and staff recommends, and the Sign Board of Appeals, Sign Appeals, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Sign Review and Appeals Board recommend approval, uh, introduction, uh, to grant a special use permit for scoreboard, scoreboards at twenty-two fifty Sheridan Road. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all of the standards for special use in the T-two district. Next, uh, the Zoning Board of Appeals and Staff and Planning and Development recommend introduction of Ordinance One Twenty-One O twelve, granting a special use permit for the operation of a Type Two restaurant at eight forty-three Dodge Avenue, known as the famous burrito. The applicant has complied with all zoning requirements and meets all of the standards of special use of C-one district. For introduction. Next, for action, is Seventy-two O twelve, um, and I'm removing this from the consent agenda, uh, P- Next, for action, is 72012, and I'm removing this from the consent agenda. P5, the chairman will deal with that. Next, under appointments, Madam Mayor, has recommended for the Arts Council Greg Allen and Lisa Deglia Tony. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. To approve the consent agenda, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman, tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Grover, could we have Administration and Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As to A-11, I move introduction of Ordinance 62012, amending Title II, Chapter III of the city code, to address state law amendments to the fire department hiring process, expanding the number and role of commissioners in the hiring process for new police officers and firefighter, firefighters, and addressing changes in the hiring practices within our Division of Human Resources.
Alderman Braithwaite.
I just, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a few questions, and I realize that this is just up for introduction. We spent a lot of time just looking and having discussions about the police force and the hiring. I'm curious to know, maybe either from the city manager, from Chief Kleiber, how this is going to change the interviewing process.
Alderman Braithwaite, members of the council, it's going to alter the process a little bit for both police and fire. Most of these amendments are being driven by a piece of state legislation that was passed last year for the fire service, so Chief Kleiber is here, and he can speak to that. On the police side, what it's going to do is it's going to allow for a greater rotation of civil service commissioners to be part of the interview process. So, I think we'll get a little bit more diversity in the folks that are able. We're looking, this ordinance would also increase the number of civil service commissioners from three to five, so I think that will help the process there. It will also consolidate on the police side some of the interviews, so rather than there being two interviews with the police management team and civil service, those interviews will occur together with human resource staff presence. So, that's the changes on the interview side with police. I'll let Chief Kleiber talk about the fireside, and then maybe I can end with some other more broad-based changes, I think, that will help us with the overall recruiting process and give the Civil Service Commission a greater role in setting some of the parameters each time we go out and hire police officers and firefighters. But Chief Kleiber, if you could speak to the state law changes.
Madam Mayor, City Clerk Green, City Council members, Chief Kleiber. Yes, there was recent legislation passed that mandated hiring practices for firefighters in the entire state of Illinois. So, what that means for us right now is that we have to abide by a process of hiring these firefighters, and then what, either by the test itself, the structure of the test, which is 100-question test, and the pass/fail, and then once they're, once they're put on eligibility list, we now have to interview these candidates based on the results of those tests. And instead, before what was happening, what the process was, we had category grouping, and there was some discretion involved in terms of, we can select from a category A if you finish between 90 and 100%. You didn't necessarily have to interview in rank order. You could select from that category to interview your candidates. The commission itself will be essentially the same for both police and fire. So, the makeup of the new commission will be seven commissioners, to be selected or appointed by Madam Mayor, and the role of the commissioners is going to change because they're going to have a lot more work to do, because the, as a result of this legislation, there's going to be a lot more candidates to interview, especially on the fireside. So, there may be, as, if the legislation had been in effect for our current hiring practice, current, what we just went through with our recruiting campaign two years ago, we probably would have had to interview close to 100 candidates. And that, so there's going to be a lot more work to do for the commissioners. They're going to rotate in and out. Two commissioners will be on the interview panel, which will be made up of two commissioners, the police or fire chief, and one of his sworn members. So, it'll be five commissioners, two commissioners, and HR personnel, as well as two fire or two police, depending on whether or not they're interviewing candidates for police or fire. The other issue, one of the, one of the key components of this legislation, or the rule changes too, is standardization of the questions being asked in the interview itself. We're going to come up with a list of questions to ask these candidates during the Civil Service Commission interview, or the interview panel. So, I, did I answer the question?
Alderman Rainey has a question.
And Madam Mayor, before Alderman Rainey, I just want to, I misspoke, and just to be clear on the numbers, we're going to be going, proposing to go from three civil service commissioners to seven civil service commissioners, but the interview panel would consist of five individuals, as was just described by Chief Kleiber, so I apologize for the confusion.
Alderman Rainey.
Could we, we got a rather detailed packet on this. What we, information we didn't get, which you could help us with, if we could get a memo and discuss it at our next meeting when it's up for action, I think that would be really helpful. At this time of night, I'm not really feeling too alert, and probably won't remember a lot of what we're being told tonight, when we're going to be voting on it in two weeks. So, I, you know, the routine is not to really debate and discuss an item that's up for introduction in ordinance, and this is, this is almost housekeeping, but it has important details. So, if you could give, maybe beef up the packet that we got and answer some of the additional questions that we might submit in the meantime, would be good.
Certainly. And the only thing I'd like to add is that I would like to encourage all of you and the press, please, to let everyone know that we need more applicants for the Civil Service Commission.
And could you maybe also put out some kind of note as to what some of the qualifications would be good to have to be on that commission?
All right. Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
And just one last thing. I was curious about the last sentence in terms of addressing high and practicing within the Division of Human Services, so if there's any, if it has an impact on any other employees other than the police or, or fire department.
It does not.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded. I hope to approve Ordinance 62012, amending the city code and the Civil Service Commission rules, and it's just for introduction. All right. So, we have introduced it, I hope.
It's been moved and seconded.
Yes.
All right. All in favor of introducing it?
Aye.
Opposed. Let's go. Go ahead, Alderman Grover.
Madam Mayor, as to Agenda Item A14, having been introduced and being suspended, I move adoption of Ordinance 113012, amending subsection 346B of the Evanston City Code to increase the number of Class B liquor licenses from 16 to 17 to permit issuance of a liquor license to 27 Live LLC, 101214 Church Street. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to support this, but I think it's probably a good practice for us, if we are going to ask for suspension of the rules on liquor licenses and other matters, to try to get that information out, so it's on the agenda beforehand, because the way we normally handle things is that it's for introduction one week, and then in two weeks, it's for action. So, there may be some people who are interested in commenting on this, who are taken by surprise by the suspension of the rules, that it hasn't been noticed. So, I would, just would suggest everyone, if we can, to try to get that information to the city manager, so it can be included on the agenda.
I think we got some last-minute information that BACIT training was complete.
Right, but there's a series, there's a series on here. Yeah.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 113012, increasing the number of Class B liquor licenses permitting issuance to 27 Live. City Clerk, and that's for introduction.
No.
No, that's, I'm sorry. That's a little late, these. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman, tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, as to Agenda Item A15, having been introduced and being suspended, I move adoption of Ordinance 118012 to decrease the number of Class D liquor licenses from 25 to 24 to permit issuance of Mecca Fresh at 1840 Oak Avenue.
Been moved and seconded to approve, to adopt Ordinance 118012, decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses due to the closure of Mecca Fresh. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Alderman, tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, as to Agenda Item A16, I move suspension of the rules for adoption of Ordinance 122012 to increase the number of Class Y liquor licenses from 2 to 3 to permit issuance to Wine Goddess LLC at 702 Main.
Second.
Alderman Wilson.
I think we need to see the additional materials that were submitted, to make sure that we've got what we need before we proceed.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bob West, Ken Cox of the City's Law Department. The applicant for the liquor license at Wine Goddess, the outstanding documents that were necessary, there were three, one of which is not fatal to the application, which is the fingerprinting. We do not, we are allowed by code, I should say, you are allowed by code to issue a conditional liquor license, if the only outstanding item are fingerprints, due to the fact that those are outside of our control or the applicant's. We're waiting to hear back from Illinois State Police and the FBI on those. As far as the BACIT certification and the surety bond for the establishment, those were provided to Law Department at approximately 5:35 this evening. So, we have received those. We were not able to make copies and circulate them in the short time between their receipt and the MPW meeting, but we do have them as of, as of now.
You have them there?
Yes, ma'am.
I want to see them. I, see, Madam Mayor, can I see?
Go ahead, Alderman Rainey.
I mean, Alderman Fisk's point is very well-taken. As a routine on these kinds of matters, we really should not move suspension of the rules. At this 5:30 at night, I, I don't feel that there is any urgency in issuing these licenses. We came here, we spend our weekends working on this material, we see that there is no BACIT training, there's no surety bond. Come here, prepare to do one thing, and then, I mean, since when do we take paperwork at 5:30 at night? If a bidder bids one second or walks in the door one second late, we don't take a bid on a multimillion-dollar job. And it might be the best bid. So, I think we need to standardize and be a little more consistent. When was this done? I mean, I feel silly that I'm the only one that cares about this, but I'm sorry. I think issuing a liquor license is not a right, it is a privilege. And if people are going to be responsible enough to have liquor licenses, they ought to get their act together and get us the stuff on time. Here, I'll support this, but I think we need to discuss this at the Rules Committee next meeting, and I'm making that reference right now.
City Manager? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman, tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
No, need to continue.
We're done.
That's right.
All right. The rules are not suspended. Alderman Grover.
Madam Mayor, as to Agenda Item A17, the matter having been introduced and the rules suspended, I move adoption of Ordinance 123012 to increase the number of Class B1 liquor licenses from 5 to 6 to permit issuance to Cheezys Evanston LLC doing business as Cheezys Pub and Grub at 622 Davis Street.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to suspend the ru, this is to suspend again, Jane?
No, no.
I think I am falling asleep. To pass Ordinance 123012, increasing the number of Class B1 liquor licenses permitting issuance to Cheezys Evanston LLC, which is highly recommended by my grandchildren who don't need the liquor license. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman, tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burrus.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing. The motion passes.
Madam Mayor, as to Agenda Item A18, I move to suspend, as noted in our agenda, our rules for adoption of Ordinance 124012 to increase the number of Class B1 liquor licenses to seven to permit issuance to Clarkson Orington Inc. doing business as JT's Bar and Grill at 1639 Orington, with the assumption and understanding that they complied with our requirements for issuance of a license.
Alderman Rainey.
Did they? I mean, at AMPW, they hadn't, so I just want to know.
Mr. Cox.
During the break between AMPW and PND, I was able to look in the files, in the liquor files essentially, and find reference to the outstanding item, which was?
BACIT or surety, or both?
This is, I thought this is the 27 Live license.
No, no.
A JT's.
A JT's.
I apologize. We had four of them. I apologize that there was the, the BACIT was outstanding, and it said that it had been completed. I just did not have a copy of that when I was reviewing it before.
What about surety?
The, yes.
Do we have, do you have evidence?
I do not have copies with me now.
Surety's in the packet, I think.
I'm talking about what's not in the packet. Why is it, why does it come to us like this? I mean, this is very unusual. We don't usually get this kind of mess at a, in our packet. We get, it either is here or it isn't, and we either vote on it or we don't, so.
Madam Mayor, I think I have the explanation for that. People are spending a lot of money to open businesses in Evanston, and they want to make sure that as soon as they can be able to sell liquor lawfully, that they do that. And your staff is trying to be as accommodating as we can. Obviously, we're not trying to break the rules and procedures of the City Council, but we have these businesses who want to make a positive impact on our community, and we're trying to be as accommodating as we can.
Alderman Fisk? I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey.
So, is, is.
You're next.
Is this file complete or not?
It is.
And it was complete at the time of the committee meeting?
Yes, I just did not have all the information available to me at the meeting.
Okay, but the committee was told that the packet was complete?
No, it was told, it was not complete at the committee meeting.
As I said before, the, I saw the documentation after the NPW meeting, before the PND meeting.
Mr. Farrar is our usual attorney at the Liquor Control Commission, and he is on vacation, so Mr. Cox is doing an able job of filling in.
I would just, just to be clear, he's actually not on vacation, he's actually attending a conference. Just, I, I.
But, but the materials had been submitted before.
Yes.
So, they, you just happened to not know that at the NPW meeting, so they were already in, someone for the city's hands, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, are you from JT's?
I'm the owner of JT's.
Okay.
I emailed it to Teresa, and I guess she's on vacation, and that's why she hasn't been, gotten the packet ready. Everything was complete. The only thing that was not was the BACIT training. So, the state of Illinois, their computer system was down for BACIT training certificates, and that's why we sent that out to them.
Take the training? Do you take the training?
That's correct.
Yes.
Like you said, it is, it's a privilege, it's not a right, you know?
That I said.
And the surety bond is page 302 of your packet. And the surety bond is page 302 of your packet.
Yeah, I see that. I'd like to ask the City Manager to oversee and make sure that these kinds of things don't happen, because I, you know, for you to even imply City Manager, that I'm not familiar with the fact that businesses want to come to Evanston and open promptly, is a little insulting. I know that. I am absolutely, 100%, one of your best advocates for new businesses in this town. But I think if we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. And I really, I really object to our not doing it right, to having paperwork that is essential to issuing a liquor license scattered throughout this building in various files that we're told one minute it's not here, and the other minute it is here, and the other minute-
And Alderman, it is not scattered, it is in the proper files, unfortunately, from time to time we have-
The proper file was in our packet, that's the proper-
And, and there was one piece missing, and we reckon, we told you that we had it in the proper file in our liquor office.
We have before us a motion to suspend the rules for ordinance 124012. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes, the rules are suspended.
Madam Mayor, I move adoption of ordinance 124012, to issue, increase the number of Class B1 liquor licenses to seven, to permit issuance to Clarkson Orington, doing business with JT's Bar and Grill, at 1639 Orington.
Been moved and seconded, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
In the last report from Administration of Public Works, is item A19, I move adoption, introduction of ordinance 128012, authorizing the City Manager to negotiate and execute a project agreement and lease agreement with Northwestern University, city-owned property located at the northeast corner of Sheridan Road and Campus Drive.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to use the two weeks between introduction and action to ask the City Manager to meet with the university, along with the fire chief, to take a look at the, at the proposed fire lane agreement. There are two things I'd like to know, whether that lane could be moved to where Northwestern originally had proposed it through the building. And secondly, I would like to have more information about, about the lease agreement and the amount of that, of the payment of the lease, rather than one, one dollar a year, the value of that to the university.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to reiterate what I had said earlier about requesting Northwestern to develop a plan to plant a dunescape on the east side or the south side of the fire lane on the city's property. I would like them to consult with our Stephanie Levine and Doug Gaynor and our Parks and Rec Department about the type of dunescape that was planted around the Clark Street Beach House, and that's what I'd like to see replicated there. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to add to Alderman Wynn's remarks, and Alderman Wynn, didn't you also mention needing more information about the planting of enhancements to the property near our water treatment plant?
Yes, that's correct.
As part of this inquiry in the next two weeks, perhaps additional information in that would be helpful.
Yes, I would like to see that as well.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Yeah, as part of that, I would like the City Manager to consult with the Chicago Audubon Society.
And what am I consulting on?
On the creation of dunescape and the creation at the, of habitat at the waterworks.
Should we be doing all this? Let them do it.
All right. Seeing no further lights, ordinance 128012 is up for introduction. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do you want a roll call?
I'm just thinking, maybe we should-
All right, let's have a roll call. Sorry about that, guys.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Recusing myself.
Oh, that's right, sorry. Yep. Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Eight to zero.
Eight to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Grover, that concludes your report. Alderman Fisk, could we have planning and development, please?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. P1, Ordinance 69012, amending the zoning ordinance to remove the prohibition on drive-through as a special use on the property located at 2628 Gross Point Road, that's Chase Bank. The Evanston Plan Commission and staff recommend that the City Council approve ordinance 69012 to amend the zoning ordinance at the Central Street Overlay District, SubArea 6, to allow consideration of a Chase Bank drive-through as a special use only on the parcel at 2628 Gross Point Road. The committee considered this, there was a lot of citizen comment, a number of citizens talked about the lack of notice and were upset about that. There was some concern on the part of the commission, I'm sorry, the committee members, and therefore, we took this, I took this off the agenda.
Thank you. Alderman Ten.
So, where is this?
Where it's up for introduction, we can vote on it.
It is for introduction.
Yes.
Ah, got it. If I could address the fact that this, we are coming up on the first anniversary of public hearings for this bank, and it's been a long route. All we've asked of tonight is that you approve the special use for a drive-through at that one parcel. And that's kind of integral to the whole thing. If we can't get this through council, I think it's time that we settle our differences and this project be over with. It's got, it's required too much staff time, a lot of neighborhood time, the developer has spent endless amount of time, and I've spent a lot of time, too. We have some other big issues coming up in my ward, and I think this is very critical, just at least get to this through, let them know in an up and down vote whether we can allow a drive-through at this site. So, I'd appreciate introducing it, and hopefully can move quickly to get it through.
Thank you. All right, has it been moved and seconded? No, could someone make a motion first? Would you?
Alderman Fisk.
Okay. All right, it's been moved and seconded.
I have a comment.
Alderman Fisk, go ahead.
Thank, thank you. I, I'm not personally, not speaking as committee chair, but I personally am not ready to introduce this without a commitment that there's going to be a meeting of the residents. This is the second meeting at PND where we've had a room full of people who are very unhappy about lack of, lack of access, I guess is the word, so.
If, you're, you're referring to a group of about 12, 10 or 12 people? In six ward standards, that's not a large group. We have huge support for this in the neighborhood, Hillside neighborhood, we have huge support for this in the ward. Those people in support tend to not come out for these meetings, but there is a core group that has been opposing this from the beginning. I would not expect anything different from that group. Chase has gone from a three-lot proposal to a proposal that contains the bank and drive-through on the one parcel, that is a commercial business partial, parcel, and that is what this group of people have asked for all along, and it's what Chase is now willing to provide. There will be plenty of more meetings. This, this entire proposal goes back to the ZBA, where we really start to get into the actual plans and the details of what this is going to look like. And in fact, if we are going to be able to use the adjacent parcel for any use, or what we'll do with the required employee parking, that's the issue, the city is requiring them, in addition to a small lot and a bank and a drive-through, you know, 10 or 12 places for employee parking. So, that's not even part of the issue now. The issue is, they are at a point, Chase Bank, at which they have been asked to be, as far as having this drive-through, excuse me, the drive-through and the bank on a single lot, and that's all we're asking for at this point.
It's been moved and seconded, sorry, Judy?
May I speak?
Okay. Did you put your line up?
I did, I did.
Okay.
I, I think it is a bigger issue than that, because we're talking about a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. As Alderman Rainey mentioned during, you know, during the committee meeting, you know, it smacks of spot zoning. I have some serious questions about this, and without some, some people saying this is something that we really, really, really want, I'm very reluctant to change the zoning ordinance for one particular, to exempt one particular parcel from, you know, from the zoning ordinance. I'm, I'm just, and for all of the reasons I said during the committee, because it affects not only the neighborhood up there, but it affects neighborhoods all over Evanston, including Chicago Avenue and areas in my ward where we have commercial and residential, you know, budding up, and I think it sets a precedent, and I don't feel comfortable with that precedent.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to introduce ordinance 69012. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Bur-
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
No.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes. Alderman Fisk?
Oh, that's it.
P5.
P5.
Oh, that's P5. Oh, sorry. Okay, it's ordinance 72012, amending the zoning ordinance, residential building height, dormer size and location, half stories, accessory structure height, and legal nonconformities in the R1, R2, R3, R4, and R4A districts. The Plan Commission and city staff recommend adoption of the proposed regulation changes for residential building height, dormer size and location, half stories, accessory structure height, and legal nonconformities in the R1 to R4A districts. This ordinance was introduced at the October 8, 2012 City Council meeting, it's for action.
Is there a second? Alderman Rainey.
Second. Madam Mayor, at our previous meeting where this was introduced, I brought up the issue of nonconforming existing properties being allowed to be replaced if destroyed by means that had nothing to do with the owner. And Alderman Wilson made a motion, and it passed five to nothing. And I asked, after reading the packet, I, I felt that while for people who are attorneys, I'm sure the ordinance was very clear, but not everybody asking for relief from our zoning ordinance is an attorney, and I asked that the provision be made, a separate section in the ordinance, and that is what we have been given. And I don't know if you want me to read it, or somebody else to read it, or Alderman Wilson to read it. It is not my original motion, it's his, so.
Anybody who's awake should read it.
Anybody who's awake.
Madam Mayor, may I-
Oh, yes.
...address the council? Just as a point of clarification, the language in the, in the ordinance, in ordinance 72012 appears repeatedly in section and amends these following sections of the zoning ordinance, 6829, 6838, 6848, 6858, and 6868. And essentially, what it would do is break one large paragraph down into two smaller paragraphs, actually, one, the first one is one sentence, and the second one is a paragraph that consists of two sentences. It would read as, as follows, regardless, except for the change in the district. "A maximum building height for any principal structure in the R1 through R4A district, including any exterior new wall, shall not exceed 35 feet measured from grade to the highest point of said structure, or two and one-half stories, whichever is less." Period. And in the new subsection B, as indicated in what I passed out, "Any building or structure legally existing as of the effective date of ordinance 72012 shall be deemed compliant with this maximum building height requirement, and with regards to height, shall have the status of a legally permitted building or structure, not a noncompliance. Such conforming status shall, shall continue in the event said building is destroyed by a means not within control of the owner thereof, and shall continue, excuse me, shall allow for construction of replacement building or structure at the height of destroyed building or structure."
Now, that's a little clearer.
Is it?
Yeah.
Does that do it? Alderman Grover?
I move, I move the amendment number, letter B, that was just read to us, to this ordinance.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 72012, amending the zoning ordinance, residential building height, dormer size and location, half stories, accessory structure height, and legal nonconformities in the R1, R2, R3, R4, and R4A districts, as amended. City Clerk, could you call the roll?
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. I believe we are at call of the wards. Alderman Tindham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One quick reminder that tomorrow night, there's a sixth ward meeting to discuss the proposed budget for 2013. The meeting would be held at Three Crown Center, that's at 2323 McDaniel. It's on the first floor, and it's in the general community meeting room, which you can easily find by walking in at 2323 McDaniel. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
No report. Whoops, accident.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to express my condolences to the family of a longtime Eighth Ward resident, Linda Dwasken, who was one of the major supporters, and as a matter of fact, I think she served as chair for years and years of the original tenants' organization of Evanston. She, she also, as a neighbor of the Brummel Barton and Dobson neighborhood, led the fight when a pawn shop wanted to come into the corner of Barton and Howard, and is, she lives an attorney, and is responsible for our really having only one pawn shop, one was an attorney, and is responsible for our really having only one pawn shop, one pawn shop license in the city of Evanston. So she was a great advocate for her neighborhood, and, and I'm really very sad that she's now gone. Also, I want to remind landlords in the Eighth Ward who own buildings in my ward that we're having a meeting at the police outpost, so they can comment and testify and remark and tell me all their problems and woes regarding the whole idea of licensing. So that's October 30, 7:30 at the outpost. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Verris, thank you. Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, the first thing is that, Alderman Wynn, I hope that you and I can work together to have a neighborhood meeting regarding the path around Northwestern, and so that people feel a little bit more engaged, or at least part of the process. The second thing is that there's been a series of tire slashings in the first, in the north end of the First Ward, and I think it's, it seemed to me today from the police report, it was spreading outside of the First Ward to vandalism in other parts, especially down into the Third Ward as well. So I'd like as much information as we can get on that. What is the possible cause of this? If there, you know, is, is any connections that can be made with this type of behavior in, in our community? Because it's, it's getting to the point now where this is a major incident, and, and the tires are slashed on the side, which means they all have to be replaced. So we're, we're now up in the tens of thousands of dollars for people who have been affected. So I would appreciate that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn.
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson.
No report.
Thank you. And Alderman Holmes.
No report.
All right, moving right along. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
Unfortunately. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the City Council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding personnel, collective bargaining, litigation, and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C1, C2, C11, and C21.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Marty, go home. We'll do, we'll do it next week.
Don, what do you think of land? Don't you have a little apartment upstairs?
And we're about to run it out again.
I always kind of had a sense that one of my good friends...
I feel a lot, a lot of it.
You guys, look, you can't...
Thank you, I appreciate it.
This must say we have a target for him.
I was pretty sure...
Quick.[1733.12]